Meeting is being conducted remote um due to Governor Baker's orders in March. That meetings could be conducted in such a way at this point. Tonight, we have a full agenda and we're going to start as always with public hearing. I do have a number of messages that have come through tonight. Um but if you have comments yourself and you're watching via YouTube or via Holden Cable TV and would like to send in a comment. We have a second public hearing at the close of the meeting. You can send those comments to the word questions, questions with an S at W R S D dot net. And I will read your comments at the end of our meeting tonight. To start us off tonight is Mary Shepherd. Good evening. My name is Mary Shepherd, President of the Wachusett Regional Education Association, thirteen twenty Wachusett Street in Duckerson. As a teacher, we're on the front lines daily with our students, exploring, thinking, responding, questioning, and creating. It is a very special place where we experience everything the universe has to offer. From challenges to successes, from sadness to joy, and from privilege to kindness. Many times in my classroom, I must stop this process. I must stop the process for the only thing that is more important than making art during class. I must stop everything for the safety of the art room. There are risks in kids fitting rulers or mishandling scissors. Even us unsafe voice volume stops my teaching. It makes me take pause for something greater than the lesson itself, ensuring we all are safe. If you haven't heard, there's an M T A campaign hashtag only when it's safe. As teachers, we are thinking about the safety and well-being of our students and ourselves as we return to our school buildings. I'm an art teacher and not a biology teacher. I do not have personal knowledge of how exactly to maintain a complex system. But I do know how I feel when I entered a school building every year, whether it was in El Park Community School, Lake Street School, or Naqog Elementary. Every year, there's an adjustment period to the state, the stale air, and interacting with hundreds of students. It weakens my immune system for weeks and can return on occasion. Personally, I am blessed at Naqog where my windows can be opened. I have purchased fans and humidifiers for my room to improve air quality. But this is not the case for other rooms in Naqog, and I am sure for many other classrooms in the district. Many windows don't open and the rooms can only be in ex- the rooms can be in excess of eighty degrees on a warm fall or spring day. One of my classroom sinks is labeled for hand washing only because the water is tested as unsafe to drink. Lastly, I have hornets in my classroom. My room is infested. Some days, I'm chasing hornets more than I'm teaching. I know there are similar situations at Central Tree Middle School. I wonder if there's a huge nest or several nests in between buildings, and that would be a great science project. We had a teachable moment and discovered that hornets are actually a delicacy in Japan. There are si- the these are safety concerns I have personally dealt with for ten years. This year is different. The coronavirus, a deadly airborne virus. That has been proven to linger without proper ventilation threatens the safety of our children and my fellow staff members. This is not like teaching a student how to properly use a pair of scissors or wandering my classroom chasing a hornet. The quality of air in every classroom hallway and bathroom is of utmost importance to restrict the spread of the virus. This is why we must be as cognizant as a community as possible to improve the quality of air we breathe. If we do the work now to improve our systems, we'll not only decrease the risk of COVID nineteen. But we'll improve the health of all of us when things return to normal. We may even see less sickness during the height of flu season. With half the class out sick during last year's flu. Last year's flu season was one of the worst I've seen in my teaching career, and I am concerned. We take roughly twenty thousand breaths away, and we all deserve to breathe easy. Next tonight, we hear from Jim Brigham. He states. Dear School Committee Members. I understand that the W R S D School Committee will be voting on whether or not the W R H S. Will participate in fall sports while under remote learning status. I believe fall athletics should be offered to our students in conjunction with M I A A safety standards and guidelines. Local town and club athletic organizations have successfully held clinics, practices, and games this summer. While using safety standards similar to those adopted by M I A A. These events occurred without significant COVID nineteen outbreaks, and it provided a greatly needed outlet for many kids. Giving the success at town and club level and framework provided by M I A A. I believe we can safely offer athletics to our students this fall and provide them with a much-needed move towards normalcy. I believe this is important to their mental emotional health. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Next tonight, we're going to hear from Benjamin Tredle, who is a Wachusett senior. Dear Mrs. Weeks, Chair of the W R S D School Committee. I wholeheartedly suggest that the twenty twenty timeframe be altered to allow seniors and freshmen to return to the building in the second semester instead of the first. The reopening proposal suggests that students will vacate online school by November. When most of quarantine will be ramping up rapidly by then. With that being said, a quarantine in November equates to a full year of online schooling for seniors and freshmen who deserve to be in school the most. Freshmen need to be have, need to have some sort of early school connection. Or their future high school career will become very uncertain. And while remote learning is inevitable at some time. If every staff member and student can at least get one month in school, it would benefit the district and the well-being of everybody. As someone who has done thirty days of Zoom meetings for the R M V, I know how soulless online learning can be. And it should not be given for an entire year. With great thanks to the board for their hard work during these unsure times, I once more ask that seniors and freshmen may have the building during the second semester. This action would benefit the students who need the building the most and to the district as a whole. Tonight, we also hear from Kim Bembeneck from Jefferson, Massachusetts. I've already asked you to open the schools in September for our children so they can get back to their life and learning. Tonight, I'm running on behalf of my three kids and all those who play sports or take part in any extracurricular activities. We all know academics are the most important part of school. What drives many of our students to be the best they can be academically is having the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. School is not a choice, but extracurriculars are. The committee will be taking away student choice if you don't allow the W R S D students to participate in sports this fall in the school year. If parents and students are uncomfortable with their child participating, they can opt out. Let it be a family choice. There had been many safety measures put in place, and the positive benefits of sports and other extracurriculars can outweigh the risks. Please approve sports for our high school students tonight. Next, we heal hear from Cecilia Barton. She states. I would like to know how the school committee and W R S D are allowing practices for contact and non-contact sports to take place during the shutdown. Especially if the program has been canceled or postponed. Why are the coaches allowed to call fall practices when school is forced to function remotely? And finally, so far this evening, we hear from a concerned sister, daughter, and alumna. I don't have any. Dear Dr. McCall and School Committee Members. I'm a graduate of W R H S and writing to thank you for voting to have fully remote school this fall. Please do not change this. My student, my sister is a student in a district, and my mother is in is a district educator with underlying health issues. So this decision is great concern to me. Having watched many meetings on the topic of returning to learning, I agree a remote start is the only way to keep students, staff, and the community safe. Through Governor Baker, though Governor Baker and Desi are pushing for in-person starts. We have seen over and over again how rapidly this virus spreads when we put many people together for extended periods. All it takes is one case, and then the domino effect begins. On the separate note, regarding a time when all can return to school, I want to ask Dr. McCall why he changed his mind. From his former stance of having staff and students be six feet apart as the CDC advises for safety. Lives depend on this decision. The new Wachusett plan states three to six feet apart. Students and staff must be six feet apart for mass breaks, snack time, and lunch. The reasoning behind Dr. McCall's comments a few meetings back when he recommended six feet at all times. With the six-foot rule applied to everyday life, grocery stores, restaurants, et cetera. I wonder why we can't side with the CDC and why students are an exception to this widely accepted and state-enforced rule. Boston Public Schools is planned for six feet apart. We all know that young children may remove masks on their own for any number of reasons. They need to be at least six feet apart for when this removal happens. Since safety is our first priority, I'd like to request that we please revisit the three-to-six-foot plan prior to any return to buildings. Again, thank you to Dr. McCall and School Committee Members for your time and dedication in making these monumental decisions. And for having our district begin remotely for the sake of our staff, students, and community health. Again, anytime during the meeting tonight, um you can send further questions or comments. To questions at W R C dot net, and I'd be happy to read them at the close of our meeting tonight. Next on the agenda tonight are our chairs' opening remarks, um and so I prepared some for you as well. Good evening. I come to you tonight with a deep nostalgia over times past. These few days before the opening of school used to be fraught with anticipation and a whole different kind of worry. Who will my child's teacher be? Will he or she be nice? Will they be with their friends? Oh, shoot. I forgot the Lysol wipes and paper towels. Let me run to a number of stores who would have plenty of those on their shelves. And now here we are. As a committee, we heard this week from a vast and diverse set of constituents. We heard from teachers, many of whom concerned with their building air quality and sanitization techniques. Who in the Maslow's hierarchy of needs are at only the second tier, personal safety. Some of whom are reaching out to lawyers to re-prepare their wills in a fear that the worst could happen when they return to work. We also heard from parents worried sick about their child's education. Worried that their child would be left behind in reading or in math or in getting into college. These constituents are distrusting of our district, perhaps rightfully so. For our capacity of remote learning because of our shortcomings this past spring. And we heard from scores of parents and students alike, some of whom you heard in public comment tonight. Wanting nothing more than to kick a soccer ball or run through the wor- run through the woods for some sort of normalcy. My children too thrive for that normalcy this summer. When they return to play baseball with their friends in double A and triple A in the joint sterling Princeton League. I don't know if maybe you know, but this league was cut short, two weeks short because of a case of COVID from a coach in his family. No, nothing now, nothing can be taken for granted. But there is one constant in all these comments, all these emails, all these messages we have received. It's the need to be heard, the need to be seen, the need to have one's voice be part of the greater conversation. We've all seen that need with those writing to us begging to be heard back from. By those kids wanting to play volleyball. By you, School Committee Members, with your questions and your comments and your thoughtful insights. Reaching out to the administration for nothing more than a quick response. So tonight, I ask the administration to ramp up their communication efforts. To send out weekly emails to all constituents, to school committee members, to parents, to students. To those in the community, letting them know of where we're at and where we need to go. To reply promptly to all questions and concerns. And to delve delve that information from their archives to the public record. So tonight, we come together as a school committee, again, just as I've said in the last few minutes, to listen to be heard. We're going to listen to each other, and we're going to hear each other, and to make our decisions and our votes based on all constituents. And based on the information presented to us tonight. I now look forward to hearing from my student reps. Uh Kneecy and Catherine, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Hi, how are you?
We're doing good. Who wants to go first?
I can go first. So all I have is that NHS met this week, and we're so excited to meet all of our freshmen at freshman orientation this week. Freshman orientation is Thursday and Friday, and those students will meet with their senior mentors and their um homework teachers. And learn more about Wachusett and the so many things it has to offer, and that's all I have.
That's it? Come on!
I know, I'm sorry.
What do you got? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, it's my headphones that are muted. Got some new ones, so um. I don't have anything to say, but I am interested on hearing um the next part from Mr. McCall, uh Dr. McCall. Uh about the sports. Um I have a lot of friends that do sports, a lot of uh friends that are interested in sports. So I'm interested in how that's going to go. Um I'll probably have a lot of questions.
Yes, please make sure you guys raise your hands with that um for those questions. And to my School Committee Members. I give you guys an A plus on last week's meeting. Everything in the chat was hand raised, um so let's keep that up again and have a great meeting tonight. Next in our agenda is the superintendent's report. Um Superintendent McCall, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Sure, thank you. Uh so several different items I'd like to talk about this evening and to include the the athletics. That um unfortunately, um Jen Lynch, who's our Director of Athletics, couldn't be here this evening. But she did do a nice write-up that I can talk through uh with everyone as well. So, you know, I can tell you, staff and um administration are really excited about getting back into school. I think you you mentioned it, uh Chair Weeks, this isn't the typical year where you're out there, you know, getting used to. You know, going into Target or some other place and buying all your book supplies and so forth, and packing your backpacks and getting your wipes and everything. It's 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 just a different year, and and we understand that. We understand the frustration. You know, one of the things that we've been doing is um, you know, looking at how we can kind of ease out a little bit with some of the things that we're looking at. Gosh, uh not last week, but I I believe the week before, the state actually came out with some some metrics, some guidelines around. Uh re-entering schools. And um as we've kind of gone through looking at at those and uh the different ways in which um. You know, they're they're saying stu- students in um schools could reopen in either a hybrid model. Um or um you know, more in person. Uh you know, we're kind of falling into that category associated with um hybrid. I've met with the Boards of Health today um from the five towns. You know, I I can tell you that. There are a couple of different things associated with with the testing, and the metrics are a little deceiving. Um you know, when I spoke with a a member of one of the Boards of Health, they said, well, one of the towns is showing um very few. But we actually have more because uh the two different types of tests, antigen testing and the P C R testing. Uh the way the state's looking at it, they're only looking at the P C R testing, which is that nasal, that really long nasal swab that goes way up your. Way up your nasal passage uh versus the antigen antigen testing, which is the fast testing. And there is a little more of a false positive or positive negative. Sometimes it goes along with that. Or false negative, excuse me. So um they're purely focusing on the the P C R testing. The antigen testing, which is interesting. Um what what they're finding is that a lot of people are having the antigen test. There it's coming back positive, so they're just saying, you know what, we're we're doing our fourteen-day quarantine. So that number is actually higher, and then they're not going back in for a P C R test because they're saying, well, I'm already I'm already. Positive, then uh I'm not going to do it. So those numbers are probably a little lower than than what they should be, and that's what we we discussed today. You know, we are also looking at how we can be in a situation where we can kind of accelerate the model a little bit. We've, you know, we've been talking internally about uh the safety of the buildings. Um you know, ensuring that the air quality uh you know, works properly in in all the rooms and all the spaces. And um you know, when we're looking at the different, and you know, first and foremost, I I thank all the teachers for. The emails that they shared with all of us um over the weekend. Again, those are those are ones that we're, you you know, we're looking at, we're um, you know, actively kind of progressing through. Um all the UNIVET and systems and so forth throughout the district. There uh we have a a grant that we just put in for. Uh that two hundred and twenty-five dollar uh per pupil grant that uh actually has funds that we've put aside. Uh to help support um some of the clean air, including um room air purifiers. Uh where um some of the rooms don't have um as much air movement as we would like. Or as I I think Mary Shepherd said, a room that might not have a window that opens, you know, those types of things. So um as we kind of look at doing this, um you know, maybe accelerating, how we kind of get into. Uh or get kids back into school. I've I've taken a lot of emails from parents about that. You know, and we 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 don't want to cheat kids out of uh the the opportunity to be in school. Um I don't want to cheat adults uh that opportunity, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're opening it up safely. As we kind of look at what we're going to do, um we're going to send a note out, um a survey out to families uh tomorrow or Wednesday. Uh you you know, basically looking at whether or not, you know, what type of model they're going to stick with. Um is it going to be remote? And if we move to a hybrid, are they going to come over to that? And then secondly, we're going to look at um whether or not they they would need the transportation. Because again, I think the more we kind of get more information from people, the better off we're going to be about making uh decisions moving forward. So that'll be that'll be forthcoming as well. Couple the a couple of other things. Uh we had a technology grant that we had applied for. And we ended up getting about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars uh that we're going to be using toward uh Chromebooks. And also for the mobile hotspots, so that actually came through. We did just put our um. Our second grant in the the two hundred and twenty-five dollar grant uh or per pupil grant, that that just went in last week. And um it's usually a a week-long turnaround according to Desi, so. Uh we'll be reaching out to them on Wednesday to see where they're at with the process. Uh because again, we had a lot of different items that are wrapped into that that budget associated with the grant, including uh software and. And more P P E. Uh we're also looking at our um ten-day P D program. That's a that's a big part of what we've been focusing on for the past several days. We're we're in a pretty good place right now with the high school. How it's going to play out, we're working on um the middle and the elementary schools right now. You know, we're focusing on three different um areas uh that are based, you know, district-based P D, building-based P D, and then uh. Teacher le- or teacher-based P D self-directed, because we want to be in a situation where we give people time to work through some of the different platforms. That we're presenting to them. Um Barry Sklar and Deputy Bello. Put together a really nice PowerPoint that was, or PowerPoint um slideshow that was shared with with all staff. Uh earlier today that talked about several of the different um new programs that we're using. And it it's it's a nice opportunity for people to get into it, to start using it, to play around with it, um before we have true training on it. Um next week and the week after. Uh you know, again, what we're trying to do is look at how we can do this systematically, um you know, in all the schools. In a in a way that, you know, ultimately is is safe for everyone. Chair Weeks, I don't know whether or not you want me to talk a little bit about the the um. The the new information that was shared with them uh with us around M I A A and.
I think that kind of gives some clarity to members. Um if we can discuss that now, because I'm sure they're going to have questions for you as well.
Sure, okay. So I did have the opportunity to um. Work with Principal Viendo over the weekend and um, you know, on Friday and today prior to the meeting. Director Lynch and I kind of went through some of the the different things that they're actually going through. Uh as a as a high school and through the mid-watch district, which is uh mid-watches league in which um Wachusett participates in. So one of the things, they just had their their first meeting after this had been um pulled together. And and uh they've talked about what they're going to do and how it's going to be broken down. So in an effort to limit exposure, they're going to be broken down into pods. So Wachusett's going to be part of a pod with Shrewsbury, Saint John's, Westboro, Algonquin, and Nishoba. So the goal is only to schedule games with with those schools. Uh game schedules are going to be limited, ma- um maybe twelve games. Uh they're they're currently working on how transportation's going to work. They're also looking at pod rules. Uh that will apply to each school, and that that'll ultimately create consistency amongst all the pods. You know, within the entire mid-watch district. They also have a subcommittee on transportation, and that's what she mentioned. They're they're still pulling that together. They're looking at how they're going to provide guidance around or utilizing the Desi guidance around transportation. How that might play out with uh what we're going to be doing uh in terms of getting kids on onto buses and so forth. So something they're looking at, whether or not they have to limit um the the number of athletes who are on a particular team, that is another thing. Uh one one item that I uh forgot to mention, uh two items. The one of the things that they we would like to support um moving forward would be um. The teams that they've already said they'll be able to uh handle, and that's the that's that entire mid-watch league. And this is a a discussion they've all had. So it's cross cross-country, it's um boys golf. Boys and girls soccer and field hockey. So um girls volleyball has been moved to season two. Um which is February twenty-sixth through April twenty-fifth. So what's what's basically happened is that the seasons, you know, our typical three seasons. Uh fall, winter, spring have been um turned into four seasons. So it's a a fall season that goes from the eighteenth of September to November twentieth, right before Thanksgiving. A winter season, November thirtieth through February twenty-first. A fall-two season, so even though it's happening, it's it's called fall-two, and that will be February twenty-second through April twenty-fifth. And then a spring season will be the twenty-sixth of April uh through July third. So they're actually going a little farther. You know, in terms of some of the things that Jen wanted me to kind of stress um to everyone, you know, this evening as we're looking at this is just. You know, interscholastic athletics, it's a it it plays a really role, a vital role in terms of trying to get kids used to being back into school. Um it'll help to establish a sense of normalcy ultimately. Um you know, looking at build rebuilding those interpersonal connections that have been missing for so long for for those kids. Uh you know, the social emotional support that we could, you know, help support kids with, and also um, you know. Making sure that whatever we're doing, there are clear health parameters and safety parameters in place. So those are really the things that they're looking at as an entire group in order for this in in order for this to take place. You know, I can tell you there, you know, Principal Viendo is also working with his clubs, his after-school clubs. So even students that don't have the opportunity to participate in that in athletics, they'll have the opportunity to participate in some type of uh either virtual. Club activity. Um I'm not sure about the in-person part, but it it's something that uh you know, we'll talk about. Uh one item that the group decided to do, and this is a mid-watch group. So they'll they're not sponsoring any mills middle school athletics uh for the entire fall season. So there are no middle school athletics uh in terms of. Shrewsbury, um Algonquin, Northboro, Southboro, uh I'm sorry, this is a um Westboro. So none of those schools are going to be sponsoring uh the middle school athletics this year. So um you know, ultimately, uh Jen did say that more information will be coming out as soon as we have that later on, probably next week. You know, we'll we'll share that with families in the community, but she feels very confident they'll be able to do this safely and securely. Um you know, with the spaces that they have outside.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um I'm sure members have many questions tonight. Um I do have two hands raised. I'm going to start with them, and actually then I guess we'll just start um our trip around the table with these people tonight. Um Kneecy, you were first.
Um first, I'm I I got confused here. So you said that the mid-watch league is being divided up into pods, which is it's going to be with Shrewsbury. Does that mean that what you said is only going against Shrewsbury for every single one of those sports? Or is it just for like a specific select few, first of all?
So it's it's Shrewsbury, Saint John's, Westboro, Algonquin, and Nishoba. So it's all of those schools. So Wachusett will be playing all of those schools in in those sports.
Okay, I I got confused. When you said in order, I thought like you're splitting up two schools each.
Yeah, no, don't worry.
Um Member Haynes had a question with a hand raised.
Hi, good evening. Do you think that Jennifer might be able to be at our our next meeting uh to talk about some of the details on on these questions? Uh I I was looking at, for example, I was looking at what Desi had, and I was looking at um and some of the emails we saw, by the way. Thank you all to the kids for all your emails. I tried to write back to many, couldn't get to them all. Thank you. A lot of them referenced the Mass Youth Soccer Association, for example. And there were there were, there weren't many, but there were some discrepancies between what Mass Youth had and what Desi had as far as guidelines go. And I'm just wondering if kind of the default position would be to go to the, you know, for lack of a better word, the safer uh number. Like, for example, one called a fever a hundred point four, the other called a fever a hundred flat. One said you could have basically uh one parent or one person tag along for as a spectator, the other said two. So I'm just wondering if we're going to default towards the safer. And I and I'm asking, my first question was about Jennifer, because I realize you probably don't have the answers to specific stuff like this right now.
And Jeff, please, if you could do me a favor, if you could share uh an email uh with me with those two questions, because then I can reach directly out to Jen. I can tell you that the um. For everyone, it it used to be one hundred point four. That was the temperature. Now one hundred, so whether or not that got updated. What I am finding is a lot of the information that's coming out, uh because the updates are happening. coming out, because the updates are happening so frequently from so many different places, you know, we're starting to see some discrepancies in kind of, you know, what the expectations are with certain items. So we're doing our best to try to pull it back together. Prior to them doing anything, they will go through, you know, all of the recommendations associated with safely opening any athletics.
Okay, the last thing I had on this was simply just that to, you know, in order to get behind this personally, I would, I would need, it would have to be a conditional type of thing. I have no doubt from the emails that I saw that the kids are ready to do what the guidelines say. I have no doubt the kids are ready to do that. What I'm more concerned about are spectators who, we've seen the videos, I mean, it's not hard to find them. We've seen the videos where people who are at these events are not following what the protocols are. And basically, I can't get behind a school sanctioned event that is essentially playing with fire. So support for this would have to be conditional, that everybody, spectators, everyone who's there is following the guidance.
And I completely agree, Jeff. Jen did say in our conversation today that they're talking about each player would get one person. Again, these are just the initial discussions, but each player would have one person that could come, be in the crowd or the audience or, you know, wherever they're playing outside. And they would all have to be following the socially, the social distance ruling as we would do with anyone in, who comes onto school property anyway.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you, Member Haynes. Since we started with you, we're just going to start going down the list. Member Ember, you're next. Bob, you ready?
I am, hi. But, well, the only question I had, Darrell, is did you say that last set of games ends in July 3rd? How does that work?
You know, I'm not really, Bob, I'm not sure. When I read it a little earlier, it was to me after our conversation. So that's what she put down on here. My guess is that's, that is based upon MIAA. I don't have that document in front of me, but they probably extended it so that they have more time for playoffs.
Okay, but
It's, I think it's a little bit of a blurry line and primarily because you're crossing school years a little bit by two, three days. So we'll definitely, you know, once there's more information on that, we will definitely look at it a little more closely.
Okay, and I also share Jeff's concerns and you didn't mention masks. So I'm assuming that spectators would be six feet away, but does that, do we get to require masks in that situation?
We definitely could. Students that are on, but you know, again, some of the conversation has been around, okay, how are kids going to be able to do this? Well, they might be out there, but then as soon as they get back, they put a mask on. Similar to, I'm just trying to think, baseball, you know, if you watch Major League Baseball, the players aren't playing with a mask on the field, but when they go back into the dugout, they put a mask on. If you're watching the NBA, they're all in a bubble. So they're not really, some people are masking up, but they're in a self-contained area. So it's a very different world. Uh, yeah, definitely, this is what we would want to do in terms of making, having sure that people have masks.
Right, and my question was actually specifically, well, it was aimed at that too, but also spectators and whether we're requiring them to wear masks.
Yeah, yeah. Well, especially since, you know, we're going to be in a situation where I'm not sure how we're going to, how it's going to lay out around a soccer field, whether or not everyone's going to be up in a stand. So those are all things that they're going to be talking about prior to any type of game.
So do we have to sign on to this tonight? I know it's on the agenda to vote on, but it sounds awfully incomplete. And so that makes me a little squeamish until I, you know, the devil's in the details and it doesn't look like we have them.
Yep, so I could probably wait to see, we can't, the people wouldn't start until the 18th anyway. There is a school committee meeting on the 14th. This would give us the opportunity to have more time ultimately to kind of pull some of this stuff together. But again, we are having a meeting on the 14th as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Ember. Someone's having some paperwork out there. You're not muted, please be sure you are muting yourself and you're not on the line. Member Haber had a question regarding masks, so I'm happy to go out of order to answer your question.
It's actually not a question, but a comment. I read the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs put out a article to MIAA that specifies that all spectators would be required to wear masks in addition to the six-foot spacing. And all students and players would be required to have them as well on benches. In baseball, the hitter batter would be required to have a mask, anything that required a faceoff or requiring a mask. And they ask even soccer players to put them on and off through the field. And that article is very specific. It can be found through the MIAA website if anybody wanted to take a look at it.
Yeah, that's excellent information. You know, again, I think those are the things that Jen's looking at. And again, one of the things that we just want to make sure, and I just go back to Bob's question, this, the July 3rd would be the last day of playoffs for a specific team. So not all sports activities, not all athletics would go to that point. It would, hopefully, it would be great if they all did in the spring season, but you know, the likelihood of all of them going is pretty slim.
Thank you. Member Christian Baum.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the members of the community who have submitted emails regarding school reopening, sports reopening, and safety concerns, including those whose lives have been touched in one way or another by the COVID pandemic. The amount of emails, the sheer volume of emails was overwhelming and I appreciate everybody who took the time to share that, that information. It's certainly very helpful as we gather information to make our decisions. I want to thank the administration for their continued efforts to develop and implement both the remote learning model and the transition to the hybrid model for high needs and most vulnerable students. I have three, three points that I'd like to make regarding some information that was absent from the report as well as some information that's in the report. So first of all, I want to bring our attention to the state response. I personally am disappointed in the state for waiting until after the district plans were due and voted on before releasing new data and mandates regarding teachers and publicly stating that there should be no reason why school districts should not reopen in some way. In that statement, I feel they disregarded the chronic underfunding policies which have made our local work even harder. Far too many underfunded or unfunded mandates, including transportation, for too long has resulted in diverting our money, which should have been used for teaching and learning towards paying our under-reimbursed transportation budget. School districts are needing to acquire PPE equipment individually, therefore competing with one another for limited supplies. When a district like ours has been underfunded for too long, agility, efficiency, and capacity are threatened. If the state places the decision to open in our hands, then criticizes that decision, then perhaps the process was flawed to begin with. In addition, stating where and how teachers should be providing services adds greater concern regarding budget impacts for facilities and heating. In short, the state and DESI again seem out of touch to realities of our five towns, regional school district and the budget limitations that we face with our limited resources. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the scheduling. I didn't see any updates to our scheduling plan. And I remain concerned about the schedule concerning synchronous learning time and await an updated daily schedule that provides for more rigorous teaching and learning time for our students and teachers. I see no evidence that the feedback regarding time on learning has been addressed. While I recognize that the policy on time on learning was suspended during this time, the argument for suspending that policy focused around physical movement of students entering and moving through the building in a hybrid model and not focused on concerns around student stamina in remote learning. Therefore, I continue to see a lack of rigor in the remote learning schedule and remain concerned there. And then finally, regarding the sports season, I appreciate the work that MIAA has done to develop a comprehensive and safe, safety-focused plan to get kids back on track, pun intended. Based on the CDC guidance and the success of summer programs in the area, I support the move to reopen the sports program in accordance with safety measures. I would also like to hear how we might find a way to offer alternative programming for students not engaged in sports but inspired by other non-athletic activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Christian Baum. Dr. McCall, do you have any update on the scheduling?
Deputy Bello and I were talking a little bit about the scheduling a little earlier today. You know, one of the things that we're doing is we're refining some of the days that we're looking at, because I know there were, there were some concerns around that. We've been working with building principles around the elementary schedules, the middle school schedules, high schools pretty much set. There were, you know, again, one of the things that we're looking at is that Wednesday afternoon block of time. As we, as we, you know, look at a remote learning model, I think, you know, Laura hit it on the head, that first comment that you made around the chronic underfunding. This is, this is when the chronic underfunding kind of rears its head. So, you know, let's just say four years ago, we started looking at putting Chromebooks into kids' hands, you know, systematically in our high school and, you know, ultimately, you know, building our technology. But, you know, at the same time, we've not had the funds to put into online platforms and software programs and so forth in training. So all of those are items that what we're doing is, we're ultimately playing catch-up as a school district because, again, we run so thin in terms of our margins from year to year. So I completely agree, Laura. You know, and when we're, when we're thinking about those Wednesday afternoons, we're, Barry Sklar, Bob, myself, we've been talking about the concept of PD associated with supporting teachers around a lot of the platforms that we have because we'll have the capacity during those first 10 days to have teachers go through some online learning programs and, you know, we're purchasing online PD for them, so it'll be live and they can go through it. But again, I think most people know anytime you want to do something, you want to do it well, you have to practice and you have to come back to it and come back to it. So what we're doing is we're going to provide ongoing PD during those half-days as well to help support all of the teachers in this platform. Because even in a hybrid platform, we're going to have, we're going to have remote going on at the same time. And we don't know what everything's going to look like as we, as we move forward. So thank you, thank you, Laura, for those questions. Those are good.
If I could follow up on that, you know, I appreciate the Wednesday need for PD. I guess I'd just like to see what's happening Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, being a little beefed up in the afternoon. I just don't see how simply offering help for those who need it is a, is a way that's going to really get the, the number of students that we need actively involved on, on those afternoon sessions.
Thank you, Member Christian Baum. And Dr. McCall, if you can send that to us when, when you guys have an update, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Member La Boy.
Can you hear me okay?
There you are.
All right. I appreciate Dr. McCall's opening remarks and looking at potentially information. And I do want to call out that I feel that there is ample enough information to make a decision on athletics. I think a lot of what we heard is asking for that to be the choice. And I think that's also what we heard with opening schools, that there was an ask for a choice for those that wanted remote, there was an option for hybrid, potentially an option. And Member Weeks, I think you said it best, that the community needs to be heard. In Rutland this past weekend, there was a protest on the town hall and there were a number of families there, students, kids, asking why 70% of those who asked for hybrid were not heard. There is 80% of our district that has said that they do not have confidence or the ability to support a remote learning model. I've yet to see outreach from our district on how we are going to support those remote learners, their families, with a help desk, with training, with the ability to support that model. We're doing a great disservice to our community and my, my feeling is that the community will answer that at the voting box when it's time for the next budget. And they're not going to answer that favorably because they don't feel as if they've been heard. So I do want to put it on the school committee to understand that we made a decision on remote only when guidance from DESI, from the state clearly says that the area that our schools touch should be at minimum hybrid, if not full model. We also ignored the statistics that we got from our constituents, the people who put us in our seats and ignored those individuals and continue to ignore those individuals. So my ask tonight is that the school committee takes a deep look at who we are supporting, the community, all of the community members, to be able to listen to their needs, to be able to accommodate those needs. When we think about sports, yes, it's great to open those up, but sports are exclusive. They're not available for everybody. Schools should be available for everybody. And we've heard from a number of people that cannot appropriately attend a remote model. And let's just let that sink in for a minute. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Member La Boy. Member Longbilly.
Thank you. I came tonight very concerned about the issue of the slow pace at which we were accelerating to hybrid. And I'm glad to hear that you're considering increasing the pace of that acceleration. I actually was prepared to make a motion to rescind our approval of the reopening plan that we, we approved at the last meeting. The fact that you're considering accelerating that makes me think that perhaps that's less necessary. But I'd like to hear more about what you're thinking about that. And I also do share the concerns raised by Member Christian Baum about, about the the remote calendar. So I'd like to hear more about what, what you're thinking.
Sure, Linda. So when we look at, when we look at safely getting students and staff back into the buildings, you know, again, we want to ensure that what we're doing is providing, you know, a secure environment for them to learn and work in. So in the same way that when, when we have a typical school year and, you know, we lock all the doors, there's one point of entry, you know, that sense of security that we talk about, well, I think that same sense of security has to be there in terms of safely opening up. So one of the things we're looking at, and this is what I, why I mentioned some of the survey information, really having a solid understanding of a number of people who need to take that bus, the number of people who will be, you know, coming into the buildings, looking at all the learning spaces and in terms of the accelerated time. I mean, I'm really looking at bringing it up, you know, so that we're not, we're not waiting until January to go into hybrid model. It's, you know, I feel as though with the new metrics that have come out, and again, I agree that I think those came out, the timing was horrific. I don't know why they didn't do it two to three weeks earlier because then I think it would have helped guide many people in terms of how they're, they've looked at this. So ultimately, we now have a situation where we're looking at, okay, bringing it up, moving the, moving those dates up so that we're able to not only meet the needs of, you know, our highest need students, which is something that's going to happen within the first two weeks of teachers being in the building, you know, not in the building, but, you know, of school opening on the 16th. And then from there, what we're going to do is accelerate that time. So we're looking at those timeframes associated with getting the kids in, in the transportation right now. So that's, again, that's one of the big pushes that I'm looking at this week is how do we, how do we better define that? We can, there's nothing that says we can't accelerate that in reference to DESI. And in fact, I did reach out to the commissioner and he said, yeah, you can definitely move those dates up, you know, when, when, when you feel that it's, it's safe and when, you know, you're in a good place to do that. So that's where we're at with it right now.
Okay, so I'd like to make a So, I'd like to make a motion that at our next school committee meeting, you present a plan for accelerating the dates of, of moving to a hybrid model. That's, I'd like to make, put that motion on the table.
Member LaVoy, could you mute please?
I'd like to understand what that motion is, I've been hearing.
I have a lot of background noise from you right now. Linda, is that a motion or a request from you?
That was a motion.
Second motion.
Okay. So, what is the motion?
The motion is to ask, to request the super, the motion is to require the superintendent to bring to the next school committee meeting a plan for accelerating the transition to hybrid learning.
Okay. So, I have it as require the superintendent to present a plan on the September 14th school committee meeting to accelerate the hybrid learning? Is that correct?
Yes, correct. And I want to make it clear, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with starting remote for a couple of weeks to kind of get that up and running and working.
So, so Linda, we got the motion and we got the second, then we'll go to discussion, okay?
Okay, sure, sorry.
Okay. So, so Linda's made a motion to require the superintendent to present a plan at the September 14th meeting to accelerate the return to hybrid learning, and Member Imber has seconded that. Now, is there discussion, I want to see if there's discussion on your motion, Linda. And I'm going to write the motion within the text box, but before I do, Member Dennis has a point of order. I believe we should see if the motion is something we can do right now. Go ahead, Member Dennis.
Thank you. I, I think there's probably a couple of things here that, that I just have some questions about, right, in terms of how we're, how we're proceeding. First, you know, my understanding is that, that the school committee, and I could, will certainly be wrong and would, would submit to, to others' opinions on that and the role of the chair, but typically, our, our mode of operation would be to post motions on the agenda before we introduce them. So, you know, one form of effect would be to, under new business, you know, put a motion for the next agenda, but I think that defeats the timing of what Linda's trying to do, which is a request. The second thing that I'll mention, you know, so I, I guess I wonder if this mention, if this motion is in order, but I understand the spirit of what she's trying to do. The second is both Linda and Laura were on the prevailing side of this motion, as a point of information. I think what would be in order, if they chose to do it, would be a motion for reconsideration of the last vote. Again, not saying that that's what you're trying to do or what you want to do, but that would be a way of, that's another way of approaching that.
So, I have two rulings on that. First, I, I, I have difficulty saying that the motion in general is in order as stated for the reasons that you mentioned. I think it's more of something we would put on new business with a firm date that we would have at the next meeting. Second, I don't believe it's a need to rescind. Within the reopening plan that we approved, there was a timeline for reopening in a hybrid method. So, it's not that Member Longbulleal is stating in her motion that she is rescinding her vote to opening in a remote method. She is considering the remote method, but will increase timeline to accelerate hybrid. So, where I think the first part of your parliamentary request is valid, the second part, I don't feel as though.
I have a point of order.
I'm not suggesting that she. Excuse me?
Matt was talking over you, so I wanted to give you the floor.
I'm sorry, I don't have text chat, I just wanted to say I have a point of order.
All right, hold on one moment.
No, just, just to clarify, I, I'm not suggesting that, that Linda or, or anyone is, is making a motion to reconsider. I'm just suggesting that, given the statement that she made at, at the introduction of her comment about introducing a new motion, I guess what I'm saying is that, from a parliamentary procedure perspective, I think, subject to other people's opinions, the way that she could do that, if she wishes to, would be to introduce a motion for reconsideration, not suggesting that that's what she should do, or that's what she wants to do.
Correct. That could be a second way. So, Linda, just, just two things that you can do right now. One, that we can put your motion or your request under new business, and that is something that I would strongly request now publicly and to the superintendent be done for the next meeting. Or, second, you can choose to rescind your vote from the original reopening plan. So, I, I believe it'd be your choice, and then Member LaVoy does have a point of order I want to get to.
Yeah. Let me think out loud for just one moment. So.
There's a point of order on what Member Weeks just directed you you could do.
I, I'm, I'm okay with hearing that, Member LaVoy's point of order.
Okay, Member LaVoy, go ahead.
Okay. So, I believe you just said that Member Longbulleal could rescind her vote, that it would not be a proper motion. A proper motion would be to make a motion to reconsider, and then it would have to be made by somebody who was on the prevailing side, and then the whole body would vote whether or not we accept a motion to reconsider the vote from last week.
My understanding of a motion to reconsider is that it must be made within the same meeting where the motion was passed, and that the proper motion for a subsequent meeting is a motion to rescind. I could do it that way.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. I could do it that way, if need be. In any case, I, I'm not quite sure why my original motion is, is out of order since it's.
So, I had a point of order on that, but I think we'll address it. So, what we, as a school committee, voted on and approved, and, and this is why, to, to Member Imber's point of the devils in the details.
So, so.
We approved, we, let me finish my point of order. We approved a motion last week. We approved a motion last week to approve a remote plan that would go to hybrid no sooner than with specific dates, no sooner than, no sooner than.
What is your point of order, please? That is not a point of order to have discussion.
Of course it is.
No. What is your point of order?
My point of order is you are directing Member Longbulleal to make a motion to say to accelerate a plan by a certain date, when the original plan that was accepted gives three specific dates at least in there that say no sooner than with specific steps. So, the point of order would be you have to address those specific pieces in the original motion, rather than just put another motion over if that's a blanket statement of accelerating.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't supersede.
So, we have a number of points of order in the chat right now. We have Member Ottmar with a point of order.
Oh, just what Member Longbulleal had already stated, that a motion to reconsider can only be taken during the same meeting as the original vote.
Correct. Member Imber.
Yeah, hi. So, I, I think we have very long precedent of, and they weren't necessarily posted beforehand. I think if you go back through our history, you'll see it many times every year, and I've been on for, I don't know, 40, 50 years now, so. But I, I just think there's a lot of precedent where we've had meetings and we've made motions on, on issues. So, it's a legitimate motion.
All right. So, circle back. So, Linda, let's go, let's go with your options right now. What, which wish to proceed with?
Well, the, my, my, the reason I made a motion, just a, a motion originally that was not a motion to rescind, I don't know, funding to some, was that I thought that, since I was responding to something in the superintendent's report, and the superintendent's report was on the agenda, that therefore it would be in order. That was my thought. So, that's why I made the motion in that way. I can, if, if the chair does rule that that's not in order, then I will make a motion to rescind, and then we can, and then, but I would then still, I don't know, can I, I don't know what I can include, if I can include the request to have the superintendent bring the, a, a plan that accelerates the transition to hybrid to the next meeting or not. I don't know if I can do that.
Right now, right now on the floor before the, the many points of order, okay, with a motion that has nothing to do with the, the original reopening plan, you have a simple request to the superintendent, I wrote it down, it's in the chat yet, to require him to present a plan on the 14th of September to accelerate the timeline of the hybrid learning plan.
Right, yes.
And that is not amending the reopening plan, that is a separate side request of a plan that you wish to be seen on September 14th.
Yes, yes, that's, yes, that is, I think that's, I, I can live with that, that's.
You are not trying, if your attempt is not to adapt or change the reopening plan, but to have a separate kind of, let's call it a side letter to the reopening plan with an accelerated timeline, I would rule your motion would be in order. If you're trying to amend or change the reopening plan, then your motion would not be in order.
Ah, well, that's interesting. Can you explain that distinction?
To be able to change the plan itself, right? We would have to rescind the vote and revote on the plan as amended. If this is a side letter that is in addition to the reopening plan, then it can proceed as such.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I will, I will go with the first option, which is to have this be a, for la, a side li, I don't know that.
I don't, I don't know if that's a correct term, but it's in addition to.
Right, that, that, yes, that I'm making a new motion, I'm not rescinding the old plan, but I am requesting that the superintendent bring to the school committee a, a plan to accelerate the transition to hybrid. Yes, I can, I can, I can move forward with that. And, let me think out loud for just one second. Yeah, let's, let's start there.
We were about to, but now I have more points of order. So, we have Member Hager and Member Mills. Member Haber?
I don't know if it makes a difference, but I know that when I made my vote, I made it clear that this was a working document, and so I don't know that asking for this information is any different. It's not something that we're going to vote on with every single change.
No, I don't believe we have to approve everything that goes in, but this is a change that we're requesting specifically.
Right. She's not asking for something that has to be voted on, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay.
Member Mills, point of order?
Uh, yeah, two. One, I have no idea where we are right now. There was a motion made and seconded, and then when motions are made and seconded, they belong to the body and not to the maker, so the maker doesn't get to rescind them, but you, as chair, could have ruled it out of order, but I'm not clear that you ever did. So, did you?
I am going through many points of order.
So, so, so if you never, if you never rejected her initial point, her initial motion, then it belongs to the body, not to the maker of the motion.
Correct. Okay. So, the motion has been made and seconded. So, many might need to read the motion again, or is the motion?
Why don't you read it one more time, if that's okay?
The motion is to require the superintendent to submit a plan on the Sep, on the 14th of September to accelerate the timeline to return to hybrid learning.
Accelerate the timeline too? You kind of cut out for a second.
To return to hybrid learning. I'm getting some feedback.
I think what I said was to transition to hybrid learning.
Correct, transition. I'm going to put it in the chat box so that it is, can people also move them? To require the superintendent to submit a plan on the 14th of September. I think it's you, Bob, if you don't mind.
I think somebody needs to mute, because it's interfering.
Um, to accelerate the timeline, Linda?
Yep, accelerate the timeline for the transition to hybrid learning.
The transition of hybrid.
To hybrid.
Yep. And we got more points of order.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're going to go with Member, what do I got? Member Imber. Bob, do you have another point of order?
Uh, no, I don't. Sorry.
Do you have an, or was that yours? On an 801? Okay. I can't hear you, Laura. Something's wrong with your mic, I can't hear you, Laura. You want to type it in?
Can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
All right, sorry. Who seconded the motion?
Member Imber did.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The motion has been moved and seconded, it is in the chat box, and it's been read. Discussion, Member Mills has a question.
So, it's my turn next once we get back, but anyway, just speaking to this, I really have a problem with this. I mean, I, I, I think that we're putting in a motion, what, kind of like the way we plan to vote downstream. It, it seems like, it just seems like the motion is presupposing the answer of the discussion, and I think we need to have the discussion first. It, it just seems, I, I don't know, inappropriate. Not that I've, so I, I'm not saying I'm agreeing with the, the context of, of what, of the goal of it, it just seems like, and I, anyway, I'll stop blathering.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
A couple before, oh, here, I, I got hands. Member Haines, do you want, I'll put your hand next, Member LaVoy, member Haines is next.
Hi, thanks. I don't, I really don't want to be overly simplistic, and I realize this is, the motion is on the floor. What if, what if we just said, Daryl, can you please provide us at the next meeting what the update is, and then at that moment, we can decide if we wish to vote and amend the plan? How's that? Is that simple?
That is very simple, Member Haines, but I'm going to get to everybody else.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Member LaVoy, and then we're going to go, Member Silva.
Yeah, to, to Member Haines' point, I think that that's okay to ask the superintendent for a information lowdown, but I think it's our responsibility as a school committee to have a discussion. So, one of the things we did not do was we did not get feedback from DESI on the plan that was submitted July 31st, and we did not deliberate that in open session. And the Commissioner, Commissioner Riley had asked us to do that. We also didn't follow guidance from DESI in regards to statistics in our local community.
I need you to discuss the motion on the floor, please.
I am discussing the motion on the floor. So, to Member Mills' point, I think we're asking for a solution without having the proper deliberation that our body was entitled to have prior to voting on any plan.
Thank you. Member Silva? Asma, I'm going to circle back to you, okay? Member Gusterson?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that, it was my microphone. I, I just wanted to reiterate, I agree with Member Mills. We spent a lot of time deliberating on the plans in our last meeting, and I feel like we are literally, like, like you said, thinking that we're going to vote one way before we even have another valid set of information. We got some tidbits of information, but we don't have all of the information yet to presuppose that we're going to vote one way after all the deliberation we've had. I feel like, you know, we wasted our time last time. And in, to be honest with you, I have listened to many stakeholders, as all of you have, inside and outside of the district, and from the feedback that I have gotten, overwhelmingly, the teachers from other districts are actually jealous of the fact that we did remote, to give teachers a chance to figure out what the numbers are and what the safety of the schools are before they get involved and asked to come back into school. So, it's not just about the kids, and I really do not appreciate, or at least I feel a little bit, our time is considered as wasted if we just simply debunk our entire conversation of last meeting without more information.
Thank you.
So, I have two things. The first is that I, I agree with Member Haines' general statement that I don't know if this is the best way to go about this. However, I, I will listen to the rest of the discussion. My second thought is that this is one reason I voted no, because it wasn't complete and we didn't have enough data. And my third comment is that I believe at the time, it was described repeatedly as a fluid document. I, one of my, and, and I'm not sure if what we voted on is exactly what went to DESI word for word or not, because we didn't actually, we weren't filled in on that detail.
I'm not familiar with it, yes, it was.
Okay. So, I, I didn't know that, that was one of my questions this week. But, so that, given all those things, and that we received the DESI additional metrics and things later, and that's a whole nother discussion, personally, I, I understand the sentiment behind this, and I, I think we should have the discussion at some point, but I don't know if we need to actually have a, a specific motion and discussion on it at this point, because there'll probably be more data before. because there'll probably be more data before next, next meeting and more things to consider. I just think it's a little premature. Um, but it's also is one reason I voted no the last time, because we did not have all the information, so.
Thank you, Malia, appreciate it. Uh, Member, uh, Member Haines, you already spoke, so I'm going to circle back to you at the end. Um, Member Smith?
Hello, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I agree with Member Mills and Silva that the motion is written such that it seems as though there's a position already taken, that we would accelerate the transition to hybrid. Um, I also would say that we've already made a, there was a reason we came to our original decision, and that was through the district's recommendation that they did at the time, um, and that still holds true, I believe, a few weeks later, that they are not prepared to have people in the building yet, children, um, in the building, learning. And looking at all of the emails that we got this weekend from the teachers, it, it seems that there's a lot of work to do. So I think that this is not a motion that, uh, it's not something I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Member Ember?
Uh, thank you, and, um, also, I apologize for not being at that last meeting. So I'm certainly missing a little bit of information here, but, um, I seconded the motion because I think really what it's requesting is, is a plan. And it's not all that different than a number of issues that were raised two meetings ago, which basically said, can we have a more specific plan when we're going to open up the schools? And what are the criteria, and what, what do we need to know? And, um, all this is, I, I guess I disagree with the notion that, um, we have already decided by asking for this information, uh, what we want to do with it. It's only asking for, okay, what are you thinking of in terms of an accelerated plan? It's asking for information, um, that'll be provided, you know, I guess in about, uh, a number of weeks from now, when we do have more information. That's all it's requesting. And it doesn't presuppose how we're going to vote on it in, in any way, shape, or form. It doesn't say we're going to modify the plan that folks, uh, voted on, on, at the last meeting. It's merely saying, we really do need a plan, and normally, we would just ask for information. But I think this is serious enough that, that I, I feel we ought to be in a codified way saying, here's a deadline, we need this information, we want to know your best thoughts at this time, and that's why I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Woodland?
Hi, um, a couple of things. One is that, uh, uh, being on the Facility Subcommittee, at our last Facilities meeting, I came away with the idea that we were at real risk for not making the October 5th and so on, uh, deadlines that were in the plan. Not that that was a fo- for sure thing, but that there was a lot of building work to be done. The HVAC systems, uh, the audit of all of the buildings, the classrooms that need to be, uh, shut down, that there can't, we cannot have people in them safely. All of this work, it just seems like a really tight fit for the amount of time that was on that original plan that we voted on last time. So for that reason, I don't quite see the. I wonder if it's a good use of time to do an accelerated plan at this stage. I would rather see the focus be on making ro- remote as robust as possible, because we know that, that we have to do that. We don't have to do in person necessarily as much as I hope we can. So I just feel like it might be diverting time, resources. On the other hand, I do see the merit of it, because, uh, we need more information in front of us, solid information, timely. Um, I feel like there's a lot that just gets done in, in the shadows that we don't find out about until later, um, if at all. And so, for that reason, I do appreciate this idea of making it a formal motion versus an, uh, request for information. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodland. I do want to remind members that we're at 8:15 and we haven't gone through even our first discussion in the report, that. Um, Member Brown?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I, I don't think this should be a motion, I just think it should be under new business. And because this is such a fluid, uh, situation that we're in, DESI is coming out with new guidelines every other day, and that I, I agree with the other members that what we voted on is a working document. We're working through what we voted on with the teachers' union and everything. And so, I do believe we should ask the superintendent, our next school committee, with information on maybe accelerating, if we can, um, on the plan that we did vote on.
Thank you, Member Brown. Member Ayala, and then I'm going to get back to Member Haines and Member Longbulleal, who have already spoke.
Hi, yep, I agree with what Member Brown said, um, and Member Woodland. Uh, but we, we have a plan in place, uh, with dates already for the hybrid program. I feel like, I don't want to say it's a waste of time, putting this extra work out there to be done, putting more dates to speed this up, especially after all of the emails we got from teachers concerned with buildings. Expedi- expediting everything kind of concerns me. With all of the information we got and all of those emails especially, I feel like we have a plan in place. Let's, let's definitely put all of our, um, let's give all of, all of our time to getting a remote plan up and running, because no matter what, that's where we're starting.
Thank you, Ayala.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, quickly, Member Haines, Member Longbulleal, and anyone else?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, my question was, uh, asked by Member Haines.
You are Member Haines. All right, maybe I'm losing it already at 8:15. We've got a long day ahead of us. Member Longbulleal?
I simply want to say that, uh, Member Ember articulated my, my, uh, perspective perfectly. I don't assume, what I want is a plan that has some specificity, and I want it, and I want to be certain that we will have a plan, um, that is presented to us. I do not assume that we would approve the plan, um, and, or I don't assume with the content, uh, other than some, some degree of acceleration, I don't assume precisely what the, what the content of that plan will be. I just want to, I just want to see something with more specificity, um, that we can, um, we can, um, uh, evaluate and modify if we feel we need to, or not, or accept whatever, so.
Thank you, Member Longbulleal. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
Chair Weeks, do you mind if I chime in?
Sure, Dr. McCall.
Sorry, I know. Um, I, I just want to let you know, this is, this is something that we can do in terms of a timeframe, to, to just lay it out, um, because again, you know, I think we're, we're in a situation where we want to be able to, you know, open safely, as I said earlier, but at the same time, look at, look at, um, you know, providing the best opportunities for kids to be educated.
Thank you. Member Dennis? Oh, no, Member Bennett, then Member Dennis.
So, my question is, uh, just, um, if we are, you know, uh, considering, you know, going, going quicker, can we make, you know, that, that request be, you know, specific dates for getting the schools ready and having a list of specific things that are going to be done in the schools to make them ready for this situation? So that could be something that would be maybe a little bit more helpful so that everyone feels comfortable with that, not just accelerating the plan as like this big broad thing, but like, you know, we need to get this done by this, this done by this, this done by this. Um, and if you want to accelerate that, sure, just make those dates and make those safety things happen by those, those dates that are quicker than, if, if, if it needs to be. However, also considering, uh, real quick, that there's supposed to be a spike in the fall.
So again, we got to talk about the motion on the floor, not extra stuff, unfortunately. We can talk about that later. Member Dennis?
Thank you. So, you know, even though I raised, uh, you know, parliamentary question about the, about the order, I, I do, um, support, um, formalizing this, this request, and, and I think that, um, it encapsulates two requests that we have that I consider to be outstanding, that, that should be part of, of this request. One is understanding the plan and timeline for, uh, of, of preparing buildings in, in the way that they need to be prepared for, um, introducing students. And two is having very clear and explicit entry and exit criteria for the different phases. Um, that was discussed in the plan, um, for, uh, hybrid, and the different populations of students that are brought back. And so, um, I know that for, for myself, and, and it sounds like for many other members, these are details that we've been, um, longing to hear for, and I think that formalizing that in the form of this request is, is certainly appropriate.
Thank you very much, Member Dennis. Any other hands before we go to a roll call vote?
I would like to, to just say that I support this motion as well. And I would like to ask if it is appropriate, or if, as a member of the school committee of Rutland, that I could request their administration the opportunity to tour the, the buildings of, of Rutland to be able to see how close they are, what's actually been done, and to, to have a, a realistic assessment of that to be able to do those. So, I'd like to see that be an option as well, so that when we reconvene at the next meeting, there can be a, a realistic viewpoint of what it looks like in the actual schools.
Thank you, Member Lavoy. Are there any questions with a hand raised? All right, seeing that, I'm going to go to a roll call vote. So this is for the motion on the floor to require the superintendent to present a plan on the 14th of September to accelerate the timeline to a, a return to hybrid learning. Um, Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Bennett?
Uh, Bennett, no.
Member Brown?
Brown, no.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, no.
Member Haver?
Haver, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Ember, yes.
Member Kerschenbaum?
Kerschenbaum, no.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbulleal?
Longbulleal, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, no.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, no.
Member Shapiro?
Member Shapiro, no.
Member Silva?
Silva, no.
Member Smith?
Flap, no.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, no.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, no.
Member Young?
Young abstained. I came in late.
And the chair abstains as well. Madam Secretary, what is our vote?
Megan, you forgot Melissa.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Melissa. Um, Member Ayala, your vote, I'm sorry?
I, I wrote it in the comments too, I don't know if you missed it, but it's, my vote is no.
Okay, her vote is no as well. Um, Madam Secretary, the tally?
Hold on. Seven to fourteen to one abstention.
Okay, so seven in favor, fourteen against, one, two abstentions I abstained as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry, I apologize, so it'd be seven thirteen two.
Seven thirteen two, so the motion fails. Um, we're going to return to, I think the administration does hear what the school committee is asking for. Um, so even though there's not a formal motion, I do hope, um, that timeline is presented for our next meeting in some form or fashion. All right, Member Mills, it is your turn.
All right, so I'll try to be brief. I have a lot of questions, but I don't want answers. My, the main thrust of my questions is that, um, I think we, well, I'd rather be down with my kids right now. The fourteenth is way too long with all the work in front of us before we meet again. I, I really think we need to meet before then. Here's two buckets of questions I have that I'd want to be addressed way before the fourteenth. One is about remote. I want to know the learning time question and the schedule question, you know, the, the, I understand they can't be more than three hours, you know, when a computer gets to be rough, but they could be interspersed, like, you know, throughout the day. Um, I want to hear about, uh, what's happening on those ten days, uh, that the teachers have that we're, we're paying for, like, what is your plan for them? And I don't mean that in some sort of negative way to the teachers. I mean, I want to know that there's a plan, that you're making good use of their time, and I think we should hear about that. I also want to hear about Chromebooks, distribution, status of the delivery. I want to hear about the apps, just finally today, we heard about what apps are being used. And, you know, for my own profession, I've been putting stuff on Canvas for months, and I've been fru- I'd be frustrated if it came out, you know, today. I know there's limitations. That's kind of my first bucket. Um, uh, my second bucket is the stuff we heard this weekend. I know you don't have answers to all of it right now, because it all came in this weekend, but I think we need to hear about each, is it, are we having HVAC inspections, and how is that happening? Carpets versus floors, signage, disinfectants in the schools, um, all those things. We need to be able to relate to our constituents once the answers to those are, and the fourteenth is just way too late to have answers to, to those, those questions. I also want to hear about our plans for SPED. Um, you know, I'd asked you through, um, Chair Weeks, and I request to get more information today about, um, how we're, you know, how we're trying to prioritize kids who have the severest needs. Um, so I don't want any answers to that right now, but I, I'm, to the chair, to the superintendent, whoever, I think not doing anything till the fourteenth is, 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 is not responsible. Uh, for sports, we can't wait till the fourteenth to vote. Um, you know, there's wheels that have to be in, in machinery, right? You know, the, whether, whether we're ready to vote tonight or not, I don't know, but the fourteenth is too late. My one actual question that I do want an answer to right now, though, is the superintendent said that he was going to pad out a survey to parents about whether they would go remote or whether they would stay hybrid if there was, if that once hybrid became available, if they would need busing. I have some concerns about that. I mean, I, I think we need the information, definitely, because it'll help us guide process, but my concern is about whether that would be binding or not. Because to be honest, as a school committee member, I don't feel I have very good answers to questions that I have. As a parent, I feel like, well, do I want to send my kid back into a hybrid learning environment? If you ask me two days from now, I've got no idea, because you haven't told me what the cleaning is, you haven't told me what the process is, you haven't told me X, Y, and Z, because you don't know yet, and that's fine, right? But I don't think I should have to have a binding decision based on very limited information as a parent, right? So I understand it would be informational. There's some people who know, okay, I'm compromised, or my kid's compromised, I'm never going to go back until there's a vaccine. But I think a lot of parents who are, are on the fence would need more information than they currently have to make a binding decision by two days from now. That's, I, that's the one question I want, but then my other question is, remember Weeks, in terms of, Chair Weeks, in terms of some process, either get information or conversations before, a day before school starts.
I would agree as well, thank you. Dr. McCall, do you have any answers to, um, Member Mills' question?
So that last one, uh, can, uh, you know, when we're thinking about what we're, what we're looking at for, um, kind of the, the hybrid versus the, you know, remote, you know, I think ultimately, I hear what you're saying, that, that does make sense. Uh, you know, uh, we're not going to tie anyone directly back to someone. I know, um, some schools have done that, you know, already, where they said, hey, if you're going to go remote, you've got to make this decision by this date. Um, you know, what we want to do is make sure that we show them, okay, here's our plan, this is how it's going to work, so they have a, a way to, um, they can weigh it out one way or the other. So, uh, we, I'll make sure that information goes out before that survey goes out, so that's a great point, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, Member Mitchell?
Okay, um, hopefully we'll not take too much time. I want to thank Member Mills for addressing many of the points I had, so that will help reduce the time. Two, two of the main points that I would like to bring up is, um, I think we need more, uh, clear guidance and explanation of what all these things we are going to do when people go back to school. Very specific, right? I, I think we're, we're giving parents an option eventually to go to hybrid. And as Member Mills pointed out, I, I don't think there's enough information for parents to know whether it's safe or not to send their children. And that is included as well as in the sports. You know, I, I am, I am in favor of voting to, to get the sports started, but I think what, what the administration needs to do is lay out in a detailed manner what the school will be doing, both from a stance, as well as students, as well as transportation, to give parents the information they need to decide whether they want their children to, uh, participate. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Member Mitchell. Member Ottmar?
All right, so I would, I'd like to start by thanking, I mean, as others have, our parents, the students, educators, everyone who has kind of written in to, um, kind of share their concerns and their thoughts with us. I would like to share a conversation that I had with an educator over this weekend. This educator, they, our district, they were at home and they were quarantining. Why were they quarantining? Because last week on Tuesday, they spent an hour and a half in their classroom working to get things set up. As part of that, they worked with one of the district's tech specialists. The week before, our district tech specialist had met with an-
The week before, our district tech specialist had met with another teacher to help them get set up. That first teacher has been diagnosed with COVID. So now it has set off this chain of events of multiple employees, educators in our district being quarantined, being isolated and testing. So we have one teacher who's very sick, others who are in this awful quarantining waiting game, some of whom have had to pay $160 or been told they had to pay $160 to get this test. So this leads us to this realization that we're no longer in this hypothetical realm. We have COVID in our schools, and this is without students, just staff members in our buildings. Now, understandably, we need to be focused on getting our remote learning right. That's our first hurdle out of the gate. Got it. As we start thinking about, talking about, looking towards bringing students in, we need to be absolutely transparent about what we're doing for matters of safety. So through the Chair, I would like to request that for our next meeting, we can get an update on the status of all of our HVAC infiltration systems, status on all of the PPE that we have on hand and what's been ordered, the status on hand sanitizer and dispensing stations. Because if we got 55 gallons of, if we've got a 55 gallon drum of hand sanitizer, it doesn't help if you don't have dispensing stations as well. And then additionally, and again, it sounds like some of that's already ginned up for the next facilities meeting. And then also a status on what the district's policies or procedures are for testing, for leave, for folks who have acquired COVID, for students who have acquired COVID, for communicating that to parents, to other folks in the district. I mean, I got emails last year, year before, from my daughter's kindergarten teacher saying, got a bunch of stomach bug in kindergarten, so kind of take some procedures. So if we communicate like that for stomach bug, I think that there, with something like COVID, there's some communication that needs to be done as well, so that our community has an understanding for what risk is there and isn't. So those are the things that I would request. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ottmar. So I'm going to put that request in writing to the administration along with the return to hybrid. And I'll try to copy you guys on those two requests.
Thank you.
Member Shapiro.
Yeah, so I'll be brief because so many things have already been brought up that were on my list. And Member Ottmar, you just like hit the big thing that I was going to ask about, because when I was looking at the superintendent's report, I was actually expecting to see the request, the response to the request, I thought that was made in a last meeting for a detailed list of what needs to be done in order to get the buildings ready, so that we're ready for hybrid when we kind of say we are. So that sounds like that has been requested formally as well. And that's what I'm looking, I was actually really looking for tonight, too. And as regarding the emails from the parents and the students and everyone regarding the school sports, again, I also kind of feel like we need to see a lot more information. And I do feel that the fourteenth would be too late for us to receive that information. So I just want to kind of reiterate that request, that we have some sort of way of getting that information prior, prior to that, but I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision on that tonight either. So those are my two big leftover things from everything else that's been said so far. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Shapiro. Member Silva?
Yes, I agree with the statement that was just made. For me to talk about sports and vote on it, I would need more information. For example, we were just talking about masks earlier on, when exactly are the students going to be wearing it and not going to be wearing it? You know, how are the students going to be playing the sports with the six-week social distancing? I'm a little confused on how basketball is going to be played. The other question I had is, you know, I know Dr. McCall said there'd be a survey being sent out to parents, and I wanted to know if maybe a question on that survey could include, you know, kind of like the change in the workday of a child. I'm not, from the conversations I've had with parents, not everybody understands the process of what a child would be experiencing when they go to school, like temperature checking, six feet apart, what does a caf, you know, lunchtime look like, cafeteria time look like, mask breaks, bathroom breaks? How often are the bathrooms cleaned? Is it after every student goes to the bathroom or is it after 10? How exactly is that going to be monitored? Are kids going to get paperwork for homework because we're asking teachers to hand out paperwork and then get back paperwork? That's, you know, a great way of, you know, spreading the virus. So are the kids going to still need screen time and Chromebooks to be able to, you know, do their classwork or homework, even if they are in school? The last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, we keep hearing from the state these new guidelines, and the new guidelines that just came out earlier last week was, I believe, like, oh, if there was more than two people or three people, I believe, as students or teachers that are going to be tested positive within 14 days of each other, then the class or school or something closes. I guess my question is, do the parents and everyone understand the kind of testing this requires? That nasal passageway of that testing is extremely uncomfortable. My daughter, who is 25 years old, got that done and basically came home and said, there is no way a child can find this in any way, shape, or form comfortable or pleasing. So the fact that we are thinking of requiring something like this to be able to come back to school when we're expecting an increase in the fall is a little concerning to me. But I do agree with all the comments that have been made before. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Silva. Member Smith?
I will pass. There's been a lot said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Williamson?
So I don't want to take a lot of time repeating what I was thinking. A lot of people have shared my thoughts. But, you know, to speak for just a minute about all of the emails we got from teachers about, you know, their concerns about the air quality. And, you know, I would also like to see, you know, in detail what's being done to address those specific concerns. And just, you know, wondering if we've considered, you know, some sort of a third-party assessment that can provide a report that will be just transparent for the teachers, just for that kind of reassurance. And then to all of the kids who wrote in about sports, that was really impactful. Student voice is so important. I was hoping for more detail because I absolutely want kids playing and doing those types of things. You know, I think it's really important for them. We've said so many times that we want the social, emotional well-being of our kids to be considered, and I think that's a part of it. And then also, I'm just really glad that we're also considering putting that same kind of effort into our young artists and musicians and writers, you know, because those extracurriculars should be given that same kind of attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Woodland?
Hi, I have, I think, three categories that I want to go through, and I'll try to be quick. So one of the things that I want to ask about for sports is about the facility use that would be necessary. And I don't even, well, actually, I would like an answer about, you know, so for instance, locker rooms and bathrooms. And then what kind of sanitizing, maintenance, and so on that would require? Or would it be all under the expectation that the building itself would be closed and only the fields would be in use during fall sports? My next question is to ask again about the elementary remote plan, in particular, the elementary, because these kids need a lot more support from their parents or caregivers than the other grades. They need to be perhaps bribed to stay in front of the screen. Ask me how I know. And so this is a really big problem if it's supposed to be three hours or even 40 minutes or even 30 minutes. I've had experiences where even just 15 minutes is too much of this kind of screen time. So I would really like to know a clear plan of how to address that, because no parent in their right mind wants to be chasing down their kid to do their attendance check, to do this work or that work. And so how is that being built into knowing what we know about child development and expectations for this age group? So this is the second time in a meeting like this that I've asked for this detail, and I don't know how many emails that I have asked for this information for an update. And I'd very much appreciate one, and I know that the parents writing to me would appreciate it as well. And then the last thing is a suggestion for whenever the survey goes out, I think that it would be very worthwhile to think about what the information you're giving out is and what kind of information you're going to get back from it. I agree with other members who've commented that parents don't necessarily understand what they're signing up for when they say hybrid. I'm sure plenty do, but you want to make sure that the parents really do understand. And so if you take an idea from early elementary and SED, do a social story, quite literally do a social story of this is a day in the life of a Choxit student, of a Houghton student, of a Dawson student, so on, a high school student. And you start with the temperature check before you get on the bus and go all the way throughout their day until they arrive home. And I think that needs to be presented before any parent can answer the survey, so that they are completely knowledgeable about what they're being asked to choose. And then that way, the district has really good information to work off of and can create a realistic plan.
Thank you.
I would just like a question about the facilities one, the first one I asked. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Young?
I mean, there's been so many good questions and comments. At this point, I'd just be reiterating them, so I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Member Amos?
Hi, same everything that I was thinking has been expressed and reiterated multiple times. So the only thing I want to throw out there is I would love to see more information on activities other than sports. I know that sports are very important and there's a lot of focus on that. And I just, for fellow nerds out there, I would just, the non-athletic nerds like me, I would just like to have a bit more information about that. But other than that, thank you, everyone, for stating all my questions and points before. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Amos. Member Ayala?
Hi, so I just really quick, just wanted to thank all the parents and the students and the teachers that all sent the emails also. There's just too many to reply to, so I definitely wanted to just say that quickly. And then the only thing I really had, because every, I, everybody said everything that I was thinking already, which was great, but the one thing I just worry about with sports, and I know I want to be in favor of having sports go back, but I worry about students or even people just attending congregating before and after the sports event. I've just seen firsthand, like, camps where the camp counselors all kind of congregate together, masked down, nobody pays attention. That's just a scenario. So I just kind of worry about the congregating before and after sports events and wonder if that's something that's been touched upon. And I know Member Haber said there's an article, and I'd love to read that. I don't know. Hopefully, there's something in it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Member Bennett, and I did see your comment. Can each, I'm going to put you at the end, okay? Member Bennett?
So I think that everything has been said. Just a point that there are scholarships for other things other than sports, like the arts and everything like that. So that's important, and I'd really like to see a plan for that as well. Sports are awesome. But those other areas are super important, too. But everything's been said. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Member Brown?
Yeah, so of course, we all support sports. I believe we should get more information. There should be strict guidelines that is followed, especially on the sidelines by the spectators. And I don't truly know what we're going to be voting on tonight. Is it just support or are we going to vote yes on going into the sport? So I'll save that when we go through the
The motion.
... And then one thing I would like from the administration before 14th, September 14th meeting, is the state of the buildings and the PPE. And because what I'm hearing from most of the school committee members, it's just, it's really a lack of knowledge and information that we have, because we all want to get the kids in the schools. We want the teachers in the schools, but we don't know if we can do it safely. And so, and it's all about information. So we really need the information. So I would love, you know, Dr. McCall, if you could send out a nice email sometime later this week, just saying this is the State of the Union kind of thing, and, you know, on the buildings, on the PPE, where we're lacking, where we're working on it, and that would go a long way. That's it.
Thank you so much, Member Brown. Member Dennis?
Thank you. So I think a common refrain for tonight and probably the last few months has been that in the absence of information, people create their own narratives. I think that's why that there has been so much outreach on different levels of opinion. Certainly, there've been a number of requests for information throughout this meeting. I'll add one, and that is a repeat from a request from the last meeting, which is for the administration to outline the curricular impacts that are being made as a result of this model to start remote with a gradual phase to hybrid. If the impact, the curricular impacts are none, then say that. I suspect that's not the right answer. I certainly would be interested in knowing what the impact on early literacy would be, whether the move to remote warrants, looking at some type of project or portfolio-based curriculum versus what might typically be considered stand and deliver. And I don't think we've had any real insight into what that looks like, and so would request much greater detail in that regard. The second item that I have is, you know, we did get, I think, Daryl nodded affirmatively that the comprehensive plan was submitted to DESI as we approved it. I guess the question is, has that been approved or is there a formal approval process that DESI undergoes, and what's generally the timing of that process if so?
So I think all that DESI wanted was the plan being approved by the school committee and the decision that was made. I've not had any outreach from DESI in reference to the plan that's been submitted. I can, I can reach out to the commissioner later this evening or tomorrow morning and ask him if they're, you know, if they're actually going through the plans and, you know, critiquing them and giving feedback, but thus far, there's been no talk of that either.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Member Dennis, I did record your request, and we'll include that in the formal request for information.
Thank you.
We now have Member Gustafson.
Okay, I apologize. I'm going to speed read because I had a couple of things, and I know we're near the end. So I didn't have a lot of questions about what was in the report, but about the large amount of data and information that was not in the report or any updates since our last meeting. There were no updates from senior administration regarding staffing and budget, curriculum or building preparations, or special education, although they did have a forum last week, so I think we got a lot of information at that. I wish that data or in those slides had been shared with the whole committee, so you would also have that information. But there was also a major update from DESI about special education and compensatory services last week, which will potentially impact our budget, depending on how that plays out. So there's still room for data there. We don't know the specifics of staff members who were reinstated regarding staffing. We don't know the status of the planned tiered reductions or those being considered, except that the food services was mentioned. But other things previously discussed, we just don't know the status of. We don't know the additional staffing costs for positions, such as the contractors you mentioned in your report or things like doing the HVAC evaluations. In curricular resources, we did not get an update on resources being made available to our teachers. Today, we did get a little bit of information about that, so I appreciate that. Also tech support plans for teachers and families and whether additional staff is needed to support those. We also have not received any correspondence or update about the budget since our last meeting, which as a member of business and finance is deeply concerning and unacceptable to me, honestly. We didn't even get the basic budget update that we usually get every month. So we really have no idea what our budget looks like currently for the coming year, even month-to-month expenses. We just have not received any information, let alone how the COVID expenses might be impacting it up to this moment. In terms of special education, I did mention Um, in terms of special education, um, I did mention a couple of things. Um, we also, I've had a lot of questions from parents about just wanting to know timing. Um, things like which is impacted by our building plan. Um, I appreciate that updates on that will be coming. Um, I also had a question regarding whether or not we have a plan, um, for dealing with the backlog of testing and evaluations that are heading our way in special education. I know that that was mentioned at the forum last week and I think has been mentioned in the past. Um, but now with the additional guidance that DESI just sent out saying that they must, um, assess for regression and need for compensatory services and meet with um, teams by December, um, I don't know how that's going to impact the already, um, existing backlog that we've had for testing since we've been in a remote setting for so long. Um, I don't know if we need additional staff for that. I, I know that people are working on these questions. Um, but we just don't have answers. Uh, my other question is regarding high-needs students whose families decide to keep them at home for medical reasons. Um, do we have a plan to meeting those needs? Ideally, they would all come back to school and we have plans for doing that. But I know of several parents who have emailed me and said, I plan on my high-needs students. We have autoimmune issues in our family. I don't trust the safety of the schools, et cetera, and we're keeping them home. So how do we meet the needs of those students? Um, so that is, that, that's a summary. Um, and also with bringing students back, um, with the higher needs students, I wondered if there's a way we could consider bringing back students to a particular area of a building, even if the whole high school isn't completely ready. Could we bring back the students in the life skills wing, for example, before the whole building is ready? You don't need every bathroom ready to bring back a small portion. So that's my, my questions that are unanswered this week. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job getting through all that.
I have.
That's what I've been relying on as well. Uh, member Haber?
Thank you. Um, most of everything that I have to say comes down to communication. Um, all these questions about sports, I can tell you are all answered in that document I referred to at MIAA. Um, all of these questions that aren't being asked tonight about it could have been answered if Dr. McCall, you had just sent out that article with all of our other information. Um, the same goes to members. So there was concern about, um, testing being required for these kids. Uh, the latest information says that negative tests are not even considered, that fourteen-day quarantine is still required. So we don't need to be testing these kids with this horrible nasal swab. Um, as far as I know, teachers and paras at least do not have a start date. Um, they're looking for communication on that. Some of them are thinking it's September first, but they're not really sure. Um, back to Malia's, uh, point about budget, we haven't seen budget at all. Um, in the August fifth, uh, building, um, facilities meeting, there was said that there was an audit of the HVAC that we don't have. Again, all of this would have answered these questions tonight to make these votes so, so much more simple. Um, the only other concern I have a bit is about the next survey. Um, again, things have been brought up, but I want everyone to understand that when we did our last survey, um, you know, I was on the survey committee for the task force. The intention was not a vote and that is what parents thought it was. Um, you know, parents are saying that seventy percent of us voted for hybrid. Why aren't we doing hybrid? That is not the question, right? If hypothetically twenty-five percent of our parents said they wanted hybrid, well, that would make it a whole lot easier to do hybrid, right? But it wasn't made clear. So in an upcoming survey, I hope that they understand that it's simply for planning purposes. And make it very straightforward. And if you could answer the teacher's start date, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, member Haber. Do we have an answer just for that one quick question, Dr. McCall?
Uh, teacher's start date, so, um, they start on, gosh, I'm, I'm totally lost in terms of my calendar date. They start on the first?
September first.
September first. Correct, Rebecca?
Madam Secretary?
I'm coming, I'm coming. Yes, September first, which is next Tuesday.
Yes.
And all teachers and paras, everyone reports that day?
Uh, i- in terms of the paras, Jeff, you've had communication with them? Jeff Carlson?
Yes, Daryl. Uh, the paris are reporting on Tuesday, September first also.
Thank you guys, and that's a great segue, um, to recommendations requiring action by the school committee. Member Dennis? Oh.
Thank you. All right. I, I, oh, yeah, I think you have Kanichi there before me.
Do you mind if he goes first?
Go for it.
Thank you. Kanichi, you said you had two questions?
Yep. Um, one of them is, so I heard, well, Mr. Uh, Dr. McCall said earlier that uh, MidWatch is not going to be funding middle school sports. Why is that? Why? Is it just a financial reason? But then why would you be able to fund high school sports? What made that decision of not funding middle school sports?
Uh, Kanichi, I wasn't part of the, the conversations, uh, that happens with the, uh, athletic directors. Um, my assumption is they, um, want to be able to focus on the, the high school sports and get it done correctly. Cause again, e- you know, even, even doing what they're attempting to do is, is a pretty big task.
So do they have something planned for middle school? Because I mean-
No, they, they don't. So what I've read, um, was that they are not supporting it for the fall. I don't know if there was anything else coming up.
Okay. Uh, second question. When are we receiving schedules? When are we like, like learning who our teachers are, stuff like that?
Uh, this, I know, uh, Deputy Burlow was working with Principal Bando at the end of the week last week. Um, Bob, do you have any update on that?
Schedules should be coming out soon. There's some final changes that we're making. We're still trying to capture a little bit of information that we're unsure about at this time.
Is it within, is it within like three days? It, do you have a timeframe or is it just soon? Is it vague?
Today, the word is soon. And the week, I'll probably have a date.
Thank you. Your questions. Um, Catherine, you had a question. Sorry, DESI precede you, member Dennis, but like to let the kids go first.
Can you hear me?
I got you now.
All right. Um, well, I have one question and then a comment. Um, do we know the senior end date? I didn't see it on the calendar.
Good question.
Catherine, what was your question?
She wanted to know the, the senior end date, Rebecca.
That's never on the calendar. It depends upon when graduation is.
Right.
All right. And we don't know what it's going to be yet, so.
Exactly.
Did you have a comment as well?
Yes, I just have a, I just have a quick comment. I just, I know there are a lot of frustrated community members out there right now because there is a lot of guidelines from DESI. And as a student and a sports player for fall seasons, if we wait until that lasts like four days before sports, these students have been like running and training for these sports, like you don't just like go into the first day of sports like after sitting all summer, like these students have been training and we can't wait till that last week to give them guidelines. And there are a lot of guidelines out there from the state and I, I think we have enough information on all of that. And as a community member, I'd be very frustrated and.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Well stated, as always, both of you. Thank you so much. Uh, member Dennis?
Thank you. So, um, just one additional request for information. Again, hopefully have a meeting that takes place prior to the fourteenth. Um, and you know, understanding that I think we've put into place, or my understanding that we put into place through guidance, uh, a couple of, of years ago, um, understanding the disposition of, of those students who go out of district. Um, I'd like for, um, the administration to report back to the school committee, those, um, students who have, um, elected the school choice out. Uh, those students who have elected to go out of district and those students who have elected to homeschool. And I'd like that in comparison to the last two years.
So.
Again, I believe you had that information that we've been, guidance has been, it's put in a place of process for compiling that information.
Um, I'm putting, writing this down. So I have school choice out, homeschool. There, I thought there was a third.
There are three. So there are school choice, there's out of district, and there's homeschool.
Okay. And you want a comparison for how many years?
This year and the last, then the two preceding.
Two proceeding. Okay. I've added it to my list. I'll make sure this gets out. If I do, if we go late tonight, it might be in the morning, but I'll get this out, um, no later than eight AM tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, next on, uh, are there any questions? Any circle back, um, questions from anybody at this point? All right. Seeing none. Um, we're going to move now to, um, actions, uh, re- rec- recommendations requiring action by the school committee. Uh, the first in our agenda is to approve the amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, I would love to be able to share this so the public can see it, um, as we discuss it. Believe it's in our attachments. Um, Madam Secretary, do you have a quick version on your screen?
I do not, but maybe Barry Sklar could get one up.
They could be fair to show it as we discuss it.
Megan, it's on page twenty-three.
I scroll too fast. I got it. All right. I can share my screen. One second. I haven't done this with Google before. I've used it on Zoom. Let's see. Okay. Can you guys see my screen now? So this is the school calendar. Um, it's been moved and seconded. Um, so now there's discussion on the floor. Um, Dr. McCall, can you walk us through the changes and then I'm going to allow the school committee, um, to ask their questions if they have any?
Sure. So, um, you know, we were able to make modifications associated with the calendar this year because of the commissioner's um, decision to allow for ten days prior to the start of the school year of, um, the opportunity for, um, remote, not, excuse me, not remote learning, but, um, professional development support, uh, to open up schools. So the schedule has been, um, modified. We now have, um, quarters. So we, uh, I know Barry Sklar and Jay Howe and our tech department worked on, you know, breaking the quarters up, uh, properly. Um, we have our dates established associated with, and the other thing that we now have is our calendar is inverted. Uh, so we now have our first and last day of schools up on, on the top of the screen, um, and the, the calendar itself is down below. Uh, we have all of our days in there. Uh, we still have, um, some of those, uh, PD days and half days. And again, those half days are, are those every Wednesdays that we have broken down right now. And we have, um, you know, again, our last day of school. So we end, uh, as we always do, we have to add five days in at the end of the year for, for snow days.
Do members have questions? Um, so you can just put your hand raised in the chat. Um, member Mills?
Member Gustafson might have been first. I don't want to supersede you.
I'm going to invest in your.
Oh, I just had a question. Um, do I assume because we have received this that the teachers have, um, approved this? Because I, I actually was surprised to find it challenging to discuss this before we got to our executive session discussion of what's going on with the teachers. Um, because I, I assume, should we assume that they have agreed to this since we are looking at it and being asked to consider it?
So again, they don't have to agree to it, but, um, what they have to do, they know, we, we have, we've talked about this, um, already. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, uh, Kanichi, you had a question about a link to, to see it. I'm assuming this will get sent out to the families if it is approved. Dr. McCall? Okay. Uh, member Mills?
So, so I'm okay with voting on it. There's just two things I want to bring up. Uh, one, the Wednesday thing is confusing. Like that's going to have to be communicated on a weekly basis about this Wednesday is a full day, that Wednesday is a half day, et cetera, et cetera. But I hope that we have some fluidity and again, theme of the night, communication about how this year goes. You know, it may be that if we need, are moving to hybrid, that there need to be a couple of days to do that, or if there is a return back to remote, there needs to be a day. To be honest, like seeing April vacation in the calendar gives me pause. I, I mean, I think we should be open with parents and realizing that, you know, everything is on the table. Just because we vote on this tonight, if we may have to vote on it again. Um, you know, it's just, um, I, I think we have to recognize that there's some fluidity. We had discussed before the idea that you were pushing off, you know, PD days to maybe be able to use those later on in the year if we need to do a transition or, or a shutdown. Last comment, snow days. I don't want to hear about a snow day. If, if, if we're, if we can figure out remote, we really need to figure out how to have no snow days. Um, anyway. I'll, I'll stop.
Thank you, member Mills. Member Bennett?
Um, so I, I guess mine is, I mean, it's, it's, it's it's, it's major to me, but maybe minor to, to others. I noticed that, um, our school district has decided that we're, you know, still, uh, celebrating Columbus Day. And, um, I was wondering if maybe we could change the, um, the wording because we want to be kind and we made, um, pledges to everybody that we were going to be, um, appropriate for, for, for things like that, be culturally sensitive. I was wondering if we could just change that. All right. That's it.
That's a, that's, that's a big it. Um, Dr. McCall, any, um, clarification on her request?
We're just, so, so you make a, an interesting point. I'm just going to, this is a little sidebar, but my, my son, um, when he was an intern at U S Amherst, in the Amherst Public Schools, they actually changed the, the, the name of, of Columbus Day officially in, in, in the community, uh, so that it, it reads differently on the calendar. This is the, this is the official terminology. Um, how that kind of plays out, I think we'd probably have to go through school committee, Krista. Um, but it, it's something I think we could, uh, definitely, we could definitely talk about.
Thank you.
So this would be a process question outside of the discussion of, of the calendar, but it's something we can get moving on.
Thank you.
Member Gustafson?
So, um, I had a different question, but it, I think it's been answered. Um, but on what was just mentioned about Columbus Day, did I just understand that it's something that the school committee would need to vote on a change to the language before it was changed in the calendar? Cause I, I just like, I think it's our calendar. I just don't understand that. So I think that's a valid question. Um, and, and I was confused by your answer. So that's all I wanted to clarify.
Sure. So, um, officially the, the date is at the state, it's called Columbus Day.
Because it's a state holiday that way.
Exactly. So that's, that's how, and I think some communities have changed it to, I believe, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, that's community-based.
Just declared a day off without declaring a name for it? I mean, are we allowed, I'm just asking, I'm trying in the interest of, of being expedient in the meantime, while we sort out what we're legally allowed to do. Because it's a state holiday apparently. So if we need to recognize it as a state holiday, we can designate it as a state holiday off, but maybe not figure out the name piece later if we need to. Just a question.
And I don't have a good response, uh, for that. I, I think ultimately because it falls under those, those days up above on the top, uh, you know, we name all those days. But a- again, like, it's a, it's definitely a conversation that we need to have.
And I, and I, I want to offer a little help in the matter. I'll reach out to, um, Representative Ferguson or in, uh, Senator Goby tomorrow. They might have some insight as well, Krista, Emilia. Um, next on our list is member Dennis.
Thank you. Real quick. So the TBD under the first full day of staff development days, is that by design? And if so, what are the, what is the design?
Dr. McCall, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I am. And I'm just looking, I'm having a hard time reading this. Um, the TBD. I'm just looking at the date.
Daryl, I could jump in and answer.
Thank you, Bob. I, I'm having a hard time seeing it. Go ahead.
So Mike, uh, it, it was mentioned earlier, number one, um, we, we'd like to hold that in case we need it for a transition. If we're having to go fully remote, if we're hybrid, or if for some reason we're going quicker, much quicker to hybrid than from remote, we need an extra day in there. Originally, it was the first day before these, uh, before we started school, before day one of students with these ten days that we have in there in order to make that work. Uh, and not change the calendar for the start of teachers, that day's been removed and it's now orphaned right now. So at the very least, we need to revisit the calendar to define what that day is. But for right now, we'd like to hold on to it in case we need it to transition to or from something different.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Amos? Oh, number on hand, no longer raised. Member Ember?
Is there a reason we have to vote on this tonight? I actually second the, the, the concerns about naming it Columbus Day and whether we can just label it state holiday. I think that's a reasonable thing. And the other thing I wonder about honestly, just for transparency to the community, is you don't show teacher start and end dates. And, and that might be a good thing to do. Because I, I just think on, on the part of communities, if they see that teachers are starting 10 days earlier and whenever their, their end date is, that really helps. And, and it is still part of the calendar, in my opinion. So those might be things, is there a reason we have to vote on this tonight? And I don't mean to keep kicking cans down the road, but I think it's sort of imperfect.
Well, just to jump in, Bob, we've never had the teacher start dates or end dates on the calendar, so I understand that. In reference to the, the day, again, that's just how we put it down there. I have no issues with, with changing some things around, we just want to make sure that we do it correctly. In reference to just being voted on this evening, if you don't vote on this, you know, our next meeting is on the 14th. You know, again, currently, the other, the, the calendar that we currently have right now is the calendar that the school committee is supporting with an earlier start date.
Okay, thank you.
But I do believe, I'm thinking on it, it might be in order that we could put in the calendar during our amendment, remember Ember?
I'm sorry, could you?
A motion would be in order to make an amendment to the calendar.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion that we include teacher start and ending dates. And we see if there's any reason why we can't put state holiday for Columbus Day.
So, motion to add teacher start and end.
To modify the calendars so that we also indicate instead of Columbus Day, state holiday.
The motion on the floor is to add, Bob, can you mute for a second?
Sure, teacher start and end dates.
Start and end dates, and then to change Columbus Day to state holiday.
If that's, if, if there's no legal reason not to.
Is there a second to member Ember's motion? It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on member Ember's motion?
It's going to be named state holiday or is it going to be Indigenous Peoples' Day?
State holiday.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is Linda, my son interrupted me briefly. Are you looking for a second for Bob's motion?
We got, we got some enthusiastic seconds on.
Okay, good, thanks.
Um, member Gusterson, the timing of your hand raise is right in the middle of everything we're talking about. Is this to the amended motion on the floor?
No, it was right before, but I think the amendment addresses my question. The other was about the date that we needed to approve this, but now that we have a motion, that seems like it's irrelevant, so.
Member Bennett has a hand.
So is there, is there a reason why we would have to name it state holiday and not just go with Indigenous Peoples' Day, like so many other places have?
I'm just looking at, I'm looking at it from a legal kind of point of view, that that's not a recognized state holiday yet. So we are taking the day off because it is a state holiday and it's a day that the state wouldn't have off. Hasn't changed the name of the holiday yet, nor has our towns. So I think the first would be to move this to the holiday and then to work for their towns and that the state legally cares to change the name of the holiday. Just from a legal point of view. I got some hands. Member Silva? Oh, yeah, we have to wait for the motion, Asma, we'll get back to you after the motion. Member Ember?
Well, just to speak to that, my thinking was exactly that. The state hasn't designated Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I, I think I would be uncomfortable with, with putting that into a motion. But it is a state holiday and, and I believe that would be the easiest way for us to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis has a hand?
Thank you, so I guess I have just a procedural question, right? So, you know, if this motion were to, maybe this is through the chair to the administration. If this motion were to carry, would we be able to vote on this calendar tonight? Or do we need to see an updated calendar in order to vote on this calendar tonight?
I believe we've had a calendar, a very similar calendar discussion before, and we voted on the calendar as amended, if I'm not incorrect.
So I guess that's what I'd like to know, is if this emotion carries, will we be able to vote with the caveat, right? That, that, that the administration will fill in the dates of the teacher reporting and ending dates and, and changing the Columbus Day holiday? That, understanding that they will do that, that we can vote on this calendar tonight?
I see, Dr. McCall, none?
Yep, yeah, I, I think that's a, a good way to frame it. Basically, so literally, it would just be, we'll be making those modifications after you guys voted upon.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions to the motion on the floor, which would be to change the calendar, to add the teacher days, and then to change Columbus Day to state holiday? Seeing none, we'll go with a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gusterson?
Gusterson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haynes?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Ember, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Otmar?
Otmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes, yes, that passes unanimously. We now go back to the motion on the floor, which is to approve the amended 2020, 2021 school calendar as amended. As, Madam Secretary, can we add just a wording to that? The amended school calendar as amended during the August 24th meeting? Yep, what the team does, thank you. I'm going to go back to the hand raised after member Ember, so that was member Silva.
Yeah, my, my only concern, it's more of a comment, I believe, is, I know we're starting about 10 days before we usually start, but we are expecting teachers to cover all the requirements in the curriculum for the entire year. And depending upon going hybrid versus remote, especially with hybrid, we're also decreasing instruction time. So I'm a little concerned about how we're going to fit all of that. We already asked so much of our teachers, how, and, and I don't, and from the last day of school, it seems like it's June 24th or something like that, which is around the same time they usually get out anyway. So, I mean, we're giving teachers less time, less instruction time, regardless, hybrid or remote. And then on top of it, we're not decreasing the amount of curriculum they need to teach and still have all our children learn and, you know, you know, perform to our expectations. I, it's just a little bit concerning, I don't know what the solution for that is, but I'm just asking, is there anything we could do? A few more days here and there, adding in vacation, you know, not doing vacation versus adding in towards the end of the year? What are our options? Because I, I believe we're kind of putting them in a little bit of a conundrum.
Dr. McCall, do you have a quick response? And then if there's no more, we'll go to a roll call vote.
So Asma, the, the main reasoning behind those 10 days, and this is for all school districts in the state, was in order to give people time to prepare, exactly is, is what you said. You know, as I think Bob has mentioned, you know, last meeting, this meeting, the, the number of contact hours has changed as well in terms of what, what's going to be required. I, I do understand the curriculum is this big and then, you know, we're, we're only giving them this much time. So there would be modifications, but it, it's happening everywhere in terms of how that's kind of playing out. So, you know, we're, we still have to have flexibility with the calendar going forward, I think Ken mentioned that a little earlier. We, we don't know what, how everything's going to play out. We don't know, you know, what, what's going to be going on, so we'll really want to be paying attention to it.
So in that case, what are the options? Just to be clear, when you said the calendar is going to be flexible, what, what are the flexible, flexible parts?
Well, there, there are always options. So right now, the number of days that DESI is requiring, requiring of us is 170 days. So, you know, by looking at that, you, you can always, as Ken mentioned, oh, well, you know, you might not go to school in April or, or, or February, however it would play out, but you would still only have the 170 days that will be required now.
Thank you so much, there was a hand by member Woodland?
Just a real quick, so since we had the loss of learning potential and the curriculum changes from the end of last year, and then we're condensing it into 170 days already, is there an option for just going with the usual 180 days? Is that possible, is that unpalatable? I guess that's the difference that I'm, I'm questioning.
It's probably a little less palatable as we try to go through this and, and, and do this entire process. Because again, as, as you'll, and you've all noted it, this is, this is a challenge for, for everyone as we kind of go through this entire new situation. So, yeah, we're, as, as I'm looking at this, again, one of the things that is happening is that we're, because we have the ability to bring it down to 170, utilizing those, those other days, you know, allows us to do that. The other thing is, you know, we're, we're paying teachers for X number of days. So if they're getting paid for 183 days, I can't add more days to that.
All right, are there any, oh, member Mills?
Real quick, has there been any conversation from the super, from the, from DESI, Daryl, about MCAS? Because that could actually help the number of days on learning if we don't have to do MCAS this year.
All I, all I know is that during, gosh, maybe two weeks ago, the commissioner did answer a brief question about it because someone had asked about MCAS. And they're still thinking they're, they're going to move forward with it, but there's nothing set in, in stone around a timeframe.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we're going to be taking a roll call vote to amend, to approve the amended 2020, 2021, 21 school calendar as amended on August 24th, 2020. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Number Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gusterson?
Gusterson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Ember, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Otmar?
Otmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes, yes, that passes unanimously. There's a second item on the amended agenda tonight. Get the exact wording up. Rebecca? See? There's a motion to support the Wachusett Regional School District's athletic programs being offered and conducted during the 2020, 2021 school year, following the schedule and guidelines as outlined by MIAA and DESI. Is there a motion on the floor?
Moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Does the administration want to give any more quick outlines that we've already gone over? Are there further questions on this matter? Uh, Kneecy? Oh man, this got, this is the quickest, everyone coming up at the same time, all right, go ahead, Kneecy, you're first.
So for middle school, you said, there's nothing for fall. When will, when will we get information regarding the rest of the year?
We don't know. I have no idea.
So there's just a lot of unknowns going into this?
At, at the middle school level, there's one known in that they have said that there will be no middle school sports during the fall.
Just the fall, for now?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Member Gusterson?
So one of my questions was about middle school and it ties back to the budget and that our original budget reductions, including reducing, included reducing middle school sports. And that's the last we saw about a month ago that was still in there. So that's a question I have asked the administration several times, if.
Malaya? Yeah, it's still in there.
Okay, so that, that kind of takes that off the table and might answer his question. Regardless, that's where our budget stood as of a month ago, the last update we had. So my other question is, or statement really, is just that I know there's this other document we haven't seen and I've read the MIAA guidelines, I've read the stuff that DESI sent out, I've read the state guidelines about sports in general. I have some concerns and I feel like I need more information because I feel like the MIAA guidelines, some of them contradict the community guidelines in terms of sports, especially like soccer, for example, they're different. And I know we have to follow the MIAA guidelines, but I'd like to make sure that we are providing a safe experience and the justification that the administration has for asking us to support this, other than just saying this is what the conference has decided. I'd like to know what data went into that, what they've looked at in terms of our facilities, how we're going to regulate the crowds? Are there going to be tickets or passes, how we're going to do transportation? I, I just have a lot of unknowns. Well, I do support athletics and I think they're really, really important. And I, I told every one of the people that emailed me this weekend that, I responded to 80 emails this weekend. I, I do think that there's a lot of information missing in terms of making sure, just as we're doing with our class, in-class instruction, that we're going to be able to meet the safety guidelines, not just that the students would like to play. We've already had examples of COVID in our community with sports recently. And so I just think it is a concern, and I have heard mostly from athletes that would like to play, but also a couple that are concerned and parents that are concerned, knowing that it's not 100% safe and they're not sure about how they're going to handle that. So I would, I have trouble voting on this without having some of that detail in writing perhaps about what the report from the athletic director and what the basis of this recommendation is, how we're meeting our safety guidelines.
Thank you, member Gusterson. Member Mills?
So, I, I think sometimes when we're asked to make a policy decision, we make a policy decision with the information we have. I think the, the, the documents that were given by the state, by three state agencies are really detailed. And to the point of like doing kick-ins rather than throw-ins. And, and yes, there's still some questions the district's going to have to answer about transportation and, and this is all outdoor fall stuff, we're not talking about basketball, those sort of things, this is outdoor fall sports. You know, I, I think that giving the message of, let's get this done, is a vote we can take tonight. And then we're going to expect and demand all the further details about how that's going to be done, right? But, but going forward and saying we're not going to vote till, till the 14th and leaving that open, I think, you know, it puts, it puts the A.D. Lynch in a funny position of planning for something that might not happen. We're making commitments to other schools that might not happen. So I think that the binary decision, for, just for me, I'm comfortable with the binary decision being yes, without every piece of information on, on the table, but I would demand that we would have it, you know, downstream.
I would also like to just give a little piece of information for the committee, kind of like a point of order, that the only reason why we're voting on this tonight is because we as a district chose to go full remote. And DESI has only asked the districts that had chosen to go full remote to vote on this matter.
And Chair Wees, if you just mind, I know that there, member Haber had talked about a reference to EEA document. I shared the entire document from DESI on, on, on Sunday and with all families and students. And within the confines of that document are links to the extensive EEA information that's already in, in play.
Thank you. Member Woodland?
So I just wanted to reiterate the question I had from earlier, and I had another one. So are.
So are any of our facilities, our high school building, any buildings, are any students, coaches, spectators going to be walking into our facilities? Are they going to be staying on the field? Are they going to be in locker rooms, bathrooms, et cetera?
Uh, so, you know, in reference to locker rooms, uh, we're going to have to, they're going to have to change, um, before a game. So they're, they're just going to have to do it in a socially distanced way. That's one of the things, uh, that, um, A.D. Lynch is actually working on, how it's going to work, what it's going to look like. Um, you know, the exits and the entrances, the number of kids who could be in a particular area based upon square footage. So all that's going to come into play. We're not, we're not allowing kids to use lockers in in schools anyway. Um, so it's going to have to be something where kids have their own, own items. But, um, when we do have a game, um, or a practice, kids will have to have a place to change out of. Or if they're just coming into the building, um, from outside, uh, it it's a little different. So they might not have to use it. Restrooms, uh, we have restrooms that are built in outside of our, um, outside of the stadium. So they're, they're already there. Uh, but those are all details that Jen is working on, um, as we speak. And that's what she said she, um, would be doing that this week.
Okay, and then my other question is, uh, about the, uh, motion, actually. Um, we're talking about, in our discussion, we're talking about fall only. But my reading of the motion is that it's for the entire year of athletics. Um, if we vote now and we're still remote in the winter and it comes into play with basketball or any of the other indoor sports, that would significantly change how I would vote today. Um, and if, is it necessary, is it necessary to do the whole year? Could we split it into just the fall sports for now that we vote on?
Um, Dr. McCall, I don't believe basketball is on the list of approved sports because it's a close contact that and hockey for the winter.
Sorry. Um, yeah, when we're looking at this, like, the way this is broken down, uh, even, even something like football, football's not going to happen, um, immediately. It's something they're, they're looking at having, um, later on in in the spring. Uh, but practices can still, can still take place. I understand your concern around, uh, how that would play out. But the, you know, even volleyball, I think that's been moved, uh, to a different time, um, and a different timeframe. So, um, I, again, I'm not sure exactly how that's going to play out.
Um, and and to answer your question further, Linda, it, this is a requirement by Desi that we vote for this in this way. So we can't just break it down into seasons. Um, member Dennis?
Thank you. So, um, two things. First, you know, I I agree wholeheartedly with the sentiment that Ken expressed. Um, I think that, you know, this is a vote for, um, expressing the will to to move forward in this fashion. And and I think that we should, I think that's the right thing to do, um, personally. Second, you know, I'd like to clarify when we refer to, and I hear repeatedly referred to as they, um, who they are. And I think in some cases, they're two separate entities. In some cases, what we're talking, what we're taking a vote on tonight is the, what the MIAA and Desi collaboratively had put forth as, uh, the guidance. And and that's the vote that we're taking tonight. And the, and and I believe, you know, to to the earlier question, um, you know, they will continue to reassess, um, those sports that are considered to be in low, moderate, or high risk, um, prior to the season starting. And so in the case of basketball, for example, um, we would expect that the MIAA slash Desi guidance, uh, along with other state organizations, will give some feedback if it's still considered a high-risk sport. Um, they will give guidance that this may be moved to the fall-two season. Um, so, so that's the first part of the they. But I also want to clarify the other they. And and I think I've heard, um, through the chair, through Dr. McCall, that there were a couple of decisions that the mid-walk conference, as the they have, have taken up. And one was to move girls volleyball to the fall-two season. And the second was to not have middle school, um, sports. So I guess my question is, are there any other modifications that the mid-walk conference has made that's outside of the MIAA Desi recommendations besides those two?
Uh, I don't believe so, Mike. Uh, again, the girls volleyball, they said it was due to facilities issue. So that's why they moved it to fall-two. So the plan is still to have it on, um, on the calendar, uh, but in fall-two season, which is February twenty-second to April twenty-fifth. Uh, and again, uh, because they're not sponsoring middle school sports, uh, you know, I'll speak with Jen about that, uh, directly to hear what the exact conversation was around that. But my assumption is they're just trying to get the high school stuff down. Um, and they wanted to ensure that they were able to do that well.
Thank you. So then the second question on the mid-walk conference is, when we say that they have made the decision, the mid-walk conference has made a decision, is that the athletic directors? Is that the principals? Is that the superintendents? Who is the body that's making those decisions?
So that's done through the athletic directors. So when they meet the mid-watch, uh, group, they're the athletic directors and they're the ones who work with MIAA, uh, around, uh, those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, you know, again, when we're looking at some of the information associated with, is, um, remember Dennis just said, you know, you, you've got your risk level of sports, low, uh, moderate and high. And, you know, examples of the high-risk sports are football, wrestling, rugby, basketball, lacrosse, ice hockey, competitive cheer, martial arts, uh, ultimate frisbee, boxing, and pair-figure skating.
All right, thank you. Member Ottmar, I believe, oh, member Haber and then member Ottmar.
Um, just to the overall motion, I would just like to say that I would hate to see this fail, simply because, uh, you all feel that we don't have the right information. Uh, we do have that information. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to read to you from this document, uh, to answer them for you, uh, before I would hope that you would give a no vote. And to the question about locker rooms, uh, it says in the document that locker rooms for your own school would be at fifty percent capacity and that, uh, players from other teams would be expected to change into their uniforms at their own schools.
Thank you, member Haber. Member Ottmar?
Thank you. My question, uh, for the, really for the administration, really comes, is back to, uh, MIAA's COVID Task Force Recommendation Number Seven, which if, for everyone but member Haber who has it in front of her, allows for out-of-season coaching, starting on September eighteenth, with the approval or as approved by the member school principal. And so our, my understanding is that we vote yes for this. We're also allowing Principal Bean though to make his decision on whatever sports beyond the fall sports that we've talked about for coaching to take place. And the guidance didn't specify what coaching is. And so just, I didn't, folks may not have been aware that that was part of all the recommendations because there were quite a few. Uh, but I just wanted to highlight that that also was part of it, that it allows for coaching, starting September eighteenth, for every other sport in addition to the fall sports that we've talked about.
Thank you, member Ottmar. Um, Malika, um, member Gasserson, I'm going to circle back. There's a couple, there's just member Kirshenbaum who hasn't spoke and member Silva who hasn't spoke. Um, member Kirshenbaum?
Sorry, I lost my cursor. Um, so I, um, I've said this before, I support, uh, I support this, the sports opening up, the season. Um, I think that the, uh, the plan that's been put out there, the recommendations, the guidelines are detailed and thorough. Um, I think the data in terms of, uh, um, instances of COVID, uh, as we know them now with the newest map that's come out, uh, showing that we are, I believe, in a white, uh, level. I think all of that leads me to believe that this is, this is, I I envision this to to be as part of our phased reopening, that we are remote with our students. But I think that these are ways that we can reopen, um, and and see how things go with the protocols and, uh, that we put in place, on the safety markers that we have in place. And then, uh, just like the state did, as they do a phased reopening, uh, they, if they see an uptick, they, they cut back on the last phase. And I think that this is a smart way to see what works, what protocols work, what needs tweaking, um, as we learn to reopen our, our district again. So I support this, uh, this motion. Thank you.
Um, we're getting, we're closing in on the ten o'clock hour, just to let people know. Um, member Silva?
So I'd like a clarification then. Is this for the all-year-round sports or just fall? And if so, do we revisit this after fall? And or is this a blanket for the full year round? And we just are saying we're following the guidelines that are going to be given to us? Like, I just want a clarification on the.
It has, it's a year-round motion. Um, that's what's required from Desi. Um, but Desi, like everything else, will be scaling back or moving forward based on health metrics. So we can't amend the motion. This is the motion that Desi asked us to take up. Um, all right. Um, I think we just have member Gasserson with a follow-up. Do you?
Yeah, well, my follow-up was about timing. Um, I know we have, this has been posed as today or the fourteenth. But during this meeting, we have talked about extensively several times the need to have another meeting before the fourteenth. So if we are talking about that, that might be a middle ground. I'm just suggesting, as people talk about timing, that I have heard many references to, we need to meet before the fourteenth during this meeting. And this may be one of those topics where if some people need more information, there may be time to do that and still not vote on it two days before this athletic league is supposed to be starting in school. So I put that out there. Um, also, when I looked at the guidelines just now, it did say for all of the non-fall sports to be determined, basically, for all levels of the sports, whether they were high or low risk. So I think basically by doing this, uh, we are basically saying we agree with whatever they decide regarding other sports, so.
Thank you.
Those are my two questions.
Um, are there any other questions on the floor? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, hasn't, Lee, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett abstained.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Betherson?
I am torn, so I'm going to abstain because I really think I need more information.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Ember, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member LaVoy?
LaVoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Yeah, I need more information. I'm going to vote no.
Member Smith?
Smith, no.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair is going to abstain. Um, Madam Secretary, could you read the vote for us, please?
Yes, could, is Melissa going to vote?
She voted yes.
Thank you.
With hesitation.
It is seventeen to two to three.
Seventeen to two to three, the motion passes. Next in our agenda tonight is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business on our agenda. Next is the secretary's report, which is the approval of the one-three-four-nine regular minutes of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee, held on August tenth, twenty twenty, as in closed. Is there a motion on the floor?
So.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gasserson?
Gasserson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Amber?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Ember, stains.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member LaVoy?
LaVoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Do you mind repeating the motion? It was getting cut off.
For bowl minutes?
Oh, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes, that passes unanimously. For treasurer's report, financial statements, please contact Director Didi. We now move on to committee reports. Management has not met since our next meet, our last meeting. We will meet on September twenty-first. Education, member Smith?
Okay, so we, um, we have not met since our last meeting, but we do have a policy, um, for it's, it's a amended policy for its first reading. So it's AP three-eight-one-three, policy relating to education, audio, video, and or synographic recordings of parent, teacher conferences, and team meetings. Um, I, I, it's been a while. Did we do a motion to do this? I forget. Can you help me out?
So it's, uh, an emotion, um, to have, approve the first reading of the policy with, um, now I'm going to blank on the wording, uh, without reading the full motion. What's that word?
Waiving.
Waiting. Wait the reading. All right, I'm exhausted.
Okay, so I will make that motion that we, um, so I guess, do you entertain the motion? Or do I make the motion? Like, I'll make the motion to?
Yep, you can make the motion.
I'll make the motion that Megan just said, which is essentially to approve, um, the first reading of policy that I just had read the title for, AP three-eight-one-three, um, waiving the reading.
Second.
Second.
And seconded, um, would you like to speak to the motion first, Chair?
Sure, sure. So, um, this was an existing policy. The last time it had been updated was two thousand and four. And when we were looking through, uh, series of, a couple of policies, we still have more on our list in relation to, um, COVID, we were looking to see if we needed to amend policies, delete them, suspend them, or create policies. And this was one that we thought we needed to amend the title to. Um, previously, it did not contain, it was just called audio, video, and or synographic recordings of meetings. And it, it sort of outlawed, prohibited those recordings. We looked closer at the policy. What it was really talking about is the recording of parent, teacher conferences and team meetings. So we wanted it to be more in line with what the policy is actually talking about. And we felt it was still relevant, even though it's an older policy. Um, and we just wanted to update the title. And that's it.
All right. Are there, uh, is there further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gasserson, yes?
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Ember?
Member, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member LaVoy?
LaVoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes unanimously. Um, we're going to go to business finance next. Is there an update, Chair Dennis?[1765.29]
Um, sure. Briefly, um, Business Finance Committee has not met, um, not for a lack of effort. Uh, we've been seeking information, as I think other members have mentioned, on the fiscal year 20 close, as well as fiscal year 21 budget updates. Um, there was a scheduled conflict with vacations and, and other conflicts in, in scheduling the meeting. Um, I've asked for a report to be produced, which could not be reproduced in time. Um, and in lieu of that, asked for a status or copy of any existing communication between the Director of Business Finance and the Superintendent, and received, uh, no response. Um, so, uh, I suppose we will look to try to schedule a Business Finance Committee meeting when, um, updates on fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, uh, can be provided. And my hope is that's something that we can put together, um, in very short order.
Thank you so much, Member Dennis. Um, member Brown, for legal affairs?
Um, we did, uh, meet last week on Monday, and I will be more than happy to go over everything, get into executive session.
Uh, Superintendent Goals and Evaluation, Chair Mills?
So I was just recently appointed to this committee. We haven't met as yet, um, but we're going to do that quickly because I think we're a bit behind in, in setting goals.
Thank you. Facilities, uh, Chair Young?
Thanks. Um, so we met last Tuesday, um, in addition to the policy that we'll get to in a minute. Um, we had a lot of discussions on the current status of facilities in support of the current plan, um, you know, that has some students starting in October. Um, HVAC was the single largest issue, um, but there are a whole lot of other issues, um, and it basically mirrored a lot of the features reported over the last weekend. I think we'll, uh, maybe extend time before my next motion. Um, I lost my place. Uh, yeah, some of those items were like san-, hand sanitizer locations, um, how movement's going to be through the bill-, building, and some other issues. Um, you know, some of those plans have been started. Um, some of that stuff has been figured out, but in order to even, you know, look at getting in the building, one of the feedback was that, you know, there needs to be a, it's a full and open reporting to everybody involved, including the school committee, teachers, parents, and students. Um, we also had a lot of discussion on, uh, money that was available related to federal grants, separate FEMA grants, um, and state funds, um, and how it related to, um, upgrades to the system versus, uh, maintenance that had been put off for years, what funds are available for what. Um, and then one of the big things was, you know, the scope of all this, it really does require a, an engineering review. Uh, but as we talked about in that meeting, um, you know, that there's a huge demand for this in every school district, um, and there's only so many companies that can do it to go around. So that's one of our, our biggest hurdles. Um, we had a WREA rep in the meeting, and she was able to provide a list of questions. Uh, we included those in our minutes, and we'll be looking for answers at our next meeting, along with another question related to privacy and data security, related to remote learning. Um, you know, and we'll address that at our next meeting on September 1st at 6:00 PM. Again, like, it was, it was a very busy meeting, so, um, I mean, I think the next thing might have a little bit of discussion, so I'll make a motion to extend the meeting until 10:30.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. So is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Imber?
Imber, yes.
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy? Matt?
Member Lavoy, no.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro? Shapiro, yes. Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Um, would you like to make a motion?
There was one no vote, I believe, from.
Yes, one no, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so I'd like to make a motion, um, to accept the first reading of draft policy 6612.3, policy relating to pupil services for face coverings, uh, within the first reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. And member Young?
Thanks. Um, so we started with a draft MASC policy that had come out a few weeks ago. Um, and we actually had some comments and edits provided by, I believe it was our attorney Bartoulis. Um, and there was a whole lot of discussion, um, about this policy. I'm just going to hit some key points, uh, I think people may have some questions on, uh, just to give what the subcommittee had. Uh, we had a discussion on, of the primacy of the school committee policy over building policies, um, because there's some handbooks that say no face coverings. Um, you know, hopefully handbooks will be updated, but if not, this still takes precedence over any handbooks. Uh, there's discussion of dress codes, um, you know, that's also within handbooks. Uh, and basically, we felt that this should be, you know, this is a policy, and since it's an item you're wearing, it does still fall under the dress codes. So, you know, you know, vulgar language, things like that. Um, it should still follow the individual schools' dress codes related to that. Um, we did have discussions about students arriving without masks, both at the building and on the bus. Uh, in the policy, it says that this, uh, district will provide a mask in that situation. Uh, you know, however, those violations are also, you know, going to need to be addressed, um, as it happens. Um, there was discussion on the exemptions, um, related to like phys ed, mask breaks, things like that. Um, we added some wording about having those exemptions be in line with the DESI guidance. Uh, there's a lot of discussion over the exemption process for students and staff, for people that just can't wear a mask. Um, we, we wrote what we believe provides a strong but adaptable process that allows the rare exemptions, um, but also outlines that it may require certain alternative processes and protocols. Um, and also, one last thing, you know, school committee policy moves slow. I mean, we read this now, we'll read it again on the 14th if we don't meet sooner. So it's going to take weeks in order to just get the policy in place, and also wait weeks at the other end to end the policy if needed. Um, so we modified it to provide a general framework policy, and it allows superintendent to make the decision on when it starts, when it ends, and if necessary, when it comes back into play. Um, you know, because he'll be able to react faster on that, really, it's a DESI guidance and things like that, and ultimately, he's answerable to us. Um, you know, we spent a lot of time on this. Uh, we had a lot of discussions about general education, population, special ed, staff, um, and in the end, the subcommittee did vote unanimously to bring this forward.
Thank you so much. Um, are there questions from members? Member Kirshenbaum?
Hi, thank you. Um, I have, uh, well, one quick, uh, comment, and that is on the third bullet under the individual in the reading. I see, I think it's a typo there where the third bullet should read in, in, is incapacitated rather than in incapacitated. Um, so I, I assume that typo will be resolved, but I just wanted to bring your attention to that. And then also, my second point, uh, regarding the face covering policy is, um, as I read the MIAA recommendations for the sports, is that face coverings are required. So our policy would seem to contradict this recommendation. Uh, it seems that, uh, so my question is, should we, and should we include an exemption from the policy when sports teams are together, presumably outside and participating in PE type activities? Or should we remove that exemption about outdoor and physical education classes entirely? So I would just, uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to discuss that in your, in your group, or, um, if this is new information based on what MIAA just put out.
Um, I mean, I, I think I'll respond to that. Um, so, you know, just the way we, we tried to write this, and I think it still reads well this way. You know, when the DESI guid-, guidelines are followed, then you get that exemption. So if you're outside and following guidelines, then it's exempt. But if that guideline says you have to wear a mask, then you have to wear a mask. So, um, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't personally have an issue. Um, you know, and again, those guidelines involve being so many feet away, um, you know, just for the general outside of the MIAA stuff, um, which, as I understand it, you know, DESI's recommending following the MIAA guidelines. So I personally am okay with it the way it's written, um, but I am open to changes. And for the first thing, um, I'll ask the secretary to add is to incapacitate it.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to move to member Gustafson. You unmuted, Malia?
I'm sorry. Okay. So my question is regarding, as a clarification about face coverings. I know there's been a lot of discussion about what constitutes a face covering, and if things like neck gaiters and bandanas are face coverings. Um, some schools and districts and, and other public institutions have specified it must be a mask rather than a gaiter, or some of the things that have come out as being less effective. Do we, did you talk about that at all? And do we have specific guidelines on that?
Uh, so that wasn't something that came up in our meetings that I remember. Um, you know, it does specify that it has to cover the nose and mouth.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and in that, a, um, I guess, you wouldn't necessarily cover that, but
I guess I may raise that as a question perhaps, because in the past couple of weeks, there's been at least two studies that have come out about the effectiveness of different types, and different organizations have taken different tacks on that. I know, um, you know, I said others, some others, I know of some other schools that have specified it can't be a bandana or a gaiter, it has to be a mask because of, they have different results in safety. And it may be that we don't care to that degree, but I, I think there may be some need to specify that if our goal is safety, that we have looked at that and considered that. So I raise that as a question.
Member Smith has a hand as well?
Hi, um, looking at the bottom of the first page, we, it says, under the bullets, it says a student's mask for face covering is to be provided by the student's family. Then staff members are responsible for donning their own face covering. So donning means putting it on. So of course, we want them to put them on themselves. So I'm thinking, maybe we wanted a different word there, and maybe you were looking for provi-, providing their own face covering. My issue with that is, um, I think the district should be providing, um, top notch, um, protection for our teachers. And, um, just as an example, I know I use my school a lot, um, where I work, but at Algonquin, they are providing with, you know, they have, they've used their monies to buy PPE for us, as I know our district had here as well. And they're make, they're strongly recommending, I'd say almost making us wear the surgical mask that they were able to procure. So I would like to see, um, if health and safety is important.
I think, member Young, that.
I, I do have an answer for that. So the, the district will be providing the face mask for.
Okay.
Teachers and staff. Um, the point of having this line in there, um, the original MASC policy said staff will provide it. And, you know, Dr. McColl informed us that, no, we will, um, you know, within the guidelines of, you know, per day, week, depending on what your position is. Um, you know, we, but, you know, staff are responsible for donning it before they get to the building. Like, that's.
Okay.
Responsibility is, and if they don't do that, then, you know, there's, there's a staff-related issue.
Could you write something like that, just clarifying that it, because I read it, reading it after that sentence, it makes it seem like it was a mistake. So you're, you're wanting to say that staff members will enter the, they will have a face covering on when they, and they will have a mask on that was provided to them, um, prior to entering the building?
I, I mean, basically, whenever they're required to, because there may be times when they're, um, like, when eating and drinking, they're not required to have it. But when, when they have to have it, that's their responsibility to make sure they're do, um, following the policy.
Um, Adam, can I jump in? Sorry to, just, uh, I, this part of the conversation went a, a little bit, uh, it was about how, um, when you come from the parking lot into the building, you'll, you'll might have your own face mask for that portion of the trip, and then once you're in the building, you would have the district provide it. But to make sure that there's that, uh, face covering from that period into the building. I think that was where, where the donning came in.
I just think it's an awkward, thank you. Thanks for the explanation. I think it's an awkward sentence there. It's not clear to me as a reader. Maybe it would come across in a, a policy that is in a, like, a, I mean, this is the policy. So I guess it should be a little clear, just like what you're trying to say. Um, because I'm, I'm going to be doing this very shortly, and I would be like, what, why are they telling me to put it on? Of course, I'm going to put it on. Were they telling me they were going to give it to me? So I'll just maybe add another sentence or two, but I get, I get your point.
That was the entire point, is, you know, staff are required to put it on.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, it is exact.
When they're on the premises, or something, right? When they're in the building. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson? Malia? I'm going to circle back to you, Malia.
I said yes, sorry.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Imber?
Imber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes, and the motion passes. Is that it for you, Chair Young?
Yep, that's all I have. Thanks.
Um, Chair Silva, for our diversity, equity, and anti-racism.
We haven't met since the last time we met, um, from our school committee meeting, but we are scheduled to meet in a couple of weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Audit Advisory Board, Chair Mitchell?
Um, we have not met since the last school meeting, um, and we're just waiting for feedback from the administration before we set up another meeting.
And I believe you have one new member, so you're down to one town that needs membership?
Yes, yes.
In which town?
Sterling.
Sterling.
Yes.
All right. So it's Sterling, Sterling residents, if you're out there and interested in audit advisory, you would complete our team. So please send me an email if you are interested. Thank you. Um, we have no ad hoc subcommittees at the moment, or building committees. Um, are there any school council reports? Have those begun? Seeing none. Um, we're going to go on to our next public hearing, and then we do have a couple more things on the agenda tonight. Um, I did receive quite a few, um, questions during, um, during the meeting tonight. Um, so we're going to start with, um, a comment that states, if we can vote on sports, what about in-person band? Just as kids need their sports, a lot of kids need their musical connection. Um, someone asks, with the positive numbers being almost zero in our district, and the governor putting us in the white category, what is the district waiting for? A vaccine that could take years? Do, do kids not attend in-person learning for two to three years? What is the district's end goal? Is this all political? Um, the same person, um, asked further questions. Her name is Michelle. Um, how do we want to be, how do you want your child to be educated in the fall, in-person, hybrid, remote? Um, please list the hours children will have time on learning that's accurate. Thank you from Michelle. Um, next, we hear from Shannon Simpson. Good evening. I cannot tell you how furious I am about the seemingly self-serving school committee. How dare you sit there in your Zoom meeting and tell teachers and staff to accelerate hybrid? Your overreach is astounding. You go meet in person, sit in a small room with sneezing and coughing kids, and then decide if it's safe. Why are you causing all this grief? The families on the common stomping their feet, trying to get their way, shouldn't change a five-town community's decision. Leave it alone and stop thinking parents ever had a choice. The directive was that parents could choose remote if we went hybrid, not that they could pick and choose what they wanted. It's important that you understand written documents, leave it remote, leave it alone, and try to stop getting your way from the safety of your own home. The next comment's from Jennifer Lefters. Hello, does the sports plan? Hello, does the sports plan call for freshmen and JV as well as varsity? Next question from Kim Bembeneck. Please consider allowing at least two parents to attend games, especially with the sports being held outdoors. Parents of seniors like myself would really likely see their seniors play their last year of sports. Thank you. Next, from Catherine and Brian Kernan from 11 Ridgewood Drive in Sterling. I have two questions. My daughter was taking strings at Chalkset Middle School. She enjoys this very much and was doing very well. I understand that strings and band have been cut. Is there a reason for this? Does the district continue to operate under 112th? It's my understanding that chapter 70 funding was, has come through and is more than last year. If so, why have these programs be cut and why haven't the teachers listened in tier two cuts been called back yet? Finally, we hear from Eileen Thurber from 22 Glenn Gary Road. Good evening. My name is Eileen Thurber and I'm speech language pathologist in the district. I'll be entering my 14th year working at ECC. Year after year, ECC gets omitted from public discussions that the staff who work there and the families of children who attend there would find pertinent. For example, just this year, when the district presented reopening plan, ECC was not once mentioned, nor was one sentence to the slide dedicated to us. Even tonight, when administration was talking about developing the PD plan for first 10 days, the high school, middle school and elementary schools were briefly named. ECC was not mentioned. On the school calendar presented tonight, it lists the first and last days of kindergarten in grades one through 12, but nothing for preschool. ECC has 16 WREA members, roughly 35 paraprofessionals and staff members. And by the end of the year, typically 170 children that participate in our program. Not only does omitting us from public discussions make us feel unimportant, but disrespected, especially if you hope and expect us to be the first staff that re-enter your schools and work in person with children. These are respectfully requests for you to think about the children and staff who attend and work in the district. Thank you. Um, that is all for our public comment tonight. Next on the agenda is an open meeting law complaint. Um, I want to walk through new members of how this is done. Um, we did this once in April, um, and this is my first time handling this. So I do ask for some pause if, if I make any mistakes. Um, so when an open meeting law complaint is filed, um, anybody can file those complaints. It doesn't have to be a member of the school committee. Any member of public can file one. That is filed through myself, um, and it goes to the attorney general. We then ask our counsel for their advice on the complaint. She provides her advice. Uh, we will talk about the complaint and the attorney's advice. And then we can do a multitude of things. First, we can accept that there was an open meeting law complaint filed and that there was, um, we can confirm that there was a violation and the complaint was accurate. We can say that there was no o, open meeting law complaint and there was no need. Um, there was no violation committed. Or third, we can, we can offer suggestions, um, for improvement in an area of the open meeting law complaint. So I hope that that process kind of helps you guys a bit moving through this. Um, I'm going to be moving now to sharing my screen. Um, I'm going to first share the complaint, um, and then I'm going to share the attorney response. Attorney Stoneberg is not with us tonight, but she did provide a written response, um, for me to read to you all. So first, let me get to the screen share again. Just to look, help you guys look through what this looks like. So the first page, um, there's instructions for filling this out. You have to fill out the two-page form completely. And then to file it, you give it to the chair of the public body. And then we have to respond within 14 days of the complaint. Here's the complaint itself. It was submitted by Matthew Lavoy. And this public body that is the subject of the complaint is the Wachusett Regional School District School Committee, which is a regional district and Krista Bennett with a date of an alleged violation of August 11th, 2020. The person then goes to describe the complaint, which I would like to read into the record. The WRSDSC met in open session August 10th. During deliberation, the superintendent asked about feedback on a plan submitted to Desi. The superintendent indicated his conversation with Desi would not take place until the following day. And after that conversation, the superintendent would email the full school committee with details. The superintendent sent an email to the school committee on August 11th, 2020. Desi and Commissioner Jeff Riley indicated feedback was essential for school committees to eventually vote for the Worcester TNG, speaking during a greater Boston Chamber Commerce Panel on school reopening. Riley said his department will return feedback to districts on their plans this week so school committees can vote. The information in the email from the superintendent can be, can be deliberated in a future scheduled open meeting of the WRSDSC. The MGL on open meeting law states, note that the expression on an opinion of the matter within the body's jurid, bodies jurisdiction, oh, sorry guys, body's jurisdiction to a quorum of a public body is a deliberation, even if no other public body, Bobby, I am fumbling tonight, no other public body member responds. The member of the public body sends an email to a quorum of a public body expressing their opinion on a matter that could come before that body. This communication violated the law, even if none of the recipients respond. Or then wait for the meeting to share a deliberating opinion. A member of the school deliberating body member Krista Bennett replied to all members of school committee with a deliberating opinion in the email saying, this is great. While some members might have different deliberating opinions, the action replying all violated open meeting law by preventing the public body and deliberating body from hearing this during a scheduled open meeting. And then there's a section that says, what action do you want to take in response? The Chair WRSDSC has warned a deliberating body multiple times, both in writing and verbally in open meetings, including a warning on August 10th about violating the law. Member Bennett may benefit from undergoing an in-depth OML training, MAS H C training for newly elected school committee members. So that was the complaint that was shared and submitted. I am now going to share my screen a second time, um, and read to you, um, the indications from our attorney. And then I will open it, um, first the two people, the, the person filing the complaint and then the person the complaint is about first. Let's see. Go this way. So let's see. Oh, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry. Um, where is the attorney's? Please bear with me. Okay. Well, that, that was it. Oh. She put my name on it already. One more second, guys. So this is from the attorney. She put my name on it in advance. Did I have the right one? So she suggests that we say, dear Mr. Lavoy, the Wachusett Regional School District met on August 24th. In your complaint, you allege that member Krista Bennett violated open meeting law because she stated in a response to communications and vice superman, Superintendent McCall, that is great. You have alleged that the statement constitutes a deliberation among committee members and therefore Ms. Bennett violated open meeting law. Ms. Bennett is a newly elected member of the school committee and will have training on open meeting law. Ms. Bennett's statement is at most de minimis and did not violate the spirit and intent of open meeting law. The school committee therefore should find that there's no violation. That is the attorney's advice. We don't have to go with her advice. Um, we can make our own decisions, but that was her advice. Um, I'm going to open this up for discussion. Um, would the member who filed the complaint like to discuss it at all?
The only thing that I would mention is that I did, um, reach out to the Chair of the School Committee, um, prior to filing it. And member Weeks did respond, um, saying technically she did believe in open meeting law, um, violation had existed. So I, I would say that that's the process that I followed. Um, and I would also say that in the last open meeting law complaint that this school committee heard, it was discussed specifically by that attorney that any email to the full body would, would constitute that that was a deliberating opinion on feedback that should be deliberated. It did say that is great and some people may have a differing opinion of that. So it is, you know, um, I'd also say as, as filing, um, it is the right of the person filing to also, um, receive a response from the voting body and then escalate it to the attorney general if he or she filing does not agree with the body's response. So I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you. Um, member Bennett, would you like to speak?
Um, yeah, just, uh, just briefly, I, um, I feel as though this, um, it was absolutely a mistake. I was shocked that it went to everyone and was a little embarrassed that, that that went to everybody. I was, uh, responding, uh, just to receiving the email. So that's great. Thank you, um, was the full, um, email that was sent. Um, and, uh, to me, that's, uh, not necessarily an opinion. And I feel, um, I feel that this was, um, uh, you know, I feel like it was a, an overt intimidation and was harassment because member Lavoy did not agree with and was fighting with Superintendent McCall during our last, uh, committee, uh, meeting. Um, and, uh, he was already very angry. And me making that mistake and me being, um, you know, a woman, a new, new person to the, the committee, um, and a person of color made me weak in his eyes. Uh, and I just, I, I feel like it was, it was an attack, um, and is harassment. Um, it was minor, super minor, and obviously, um, a mistake. And, uh, there was no need to, to write that up as there have been several other, um, areas that could have been written up over the past, uh, few weeks that have been discussed.
Thank you. And we're not going to have a back and forth. So, um, I'm going to move to member Dennis, please.
Thank you. So, um, you know, we, uh, as a school committee, um, and, you know, everyone, um, across the country, across the world are in unprecedented times and, and trying to navigate, um, how we move forward. And, and of course, there's a lot of, um, scrutiny that, that's, uh, that's, that's coming about with us, um, during this process. And, and so our community is looking for us to be creative, um, be courageous and, and be collaborative. Um, the last thing that we need is to be filing open meeting law violations against one another. We need to find ways of making sure that we're expressive and communicative and encouraging dialogue. Um, not in any way discouraging dialogue, whether that be amongst ourselves or whether that be with the larger community. And, um, you know, I, 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 I hope that, um, the spirit, and I think that the attorney's response, uh, got to the spirit of what was intended here. Um, we need to keep in mind, we need to keep our eyes on, on the goal. Um, and, and our goal is, um, to, whatever decisions that, that we're, we're putting forward, um, people at the end of the day need to feel good about, they need to be comfortable about, they need to feel that, that they're safe. And the only way that we can get through to that is to be communicative. Um, this is the opposite of that. And, and I hope that, uh, this is not, you know, this is probably the third now open meeting law violation in the past couple of months. Um, uh, it's, it's bordering on ridiculousness, uh, and it needs to stop, uh, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, member Dennis. Member Young?
Yeah, um, I mean, just briefly, I think member Dennis kind of hit this on the head. Um, you know, it, it is important for us to deliberate openly, be open, be as, I mean, that's, that's what our public demands of us. But, you know, accidentally hitting reply all and just saying, yeah, this is great. Thanks for the email. That's, that's not a violation. Um, you know, it, it really isn't. Um, you know, it just, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the attorney's letter as written and submit that back.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Um, we're going to have a continued discussion as well. Um, uh, member Gusterson, uh, does your comment, uh, previous comment relate to the motion or to the, the complaint in general?
Um, technically both, so.
All right. Well, I'll let you go because I want to make sure everybody can speak.
Um, technically it's both. I, I was going to, um, basically agree with what's been said already. Um, I was going to say similar things and also that I did not, um, I did not particularly find this to be deliberative in nature. I think it's different than some of the other things we've considered in the past that are trying to persuade people of a particular opinion and sending things with comment. This was a simple thank you for sending us the information, which we've talked about as an issue tonight. And I think many of us send notes of that nature. And I, I just think the spirit of this was not, um, to violate any open meeting law or to persuade us of anything deliberative. So I have no problem, uh, going with what the attorney suggested.
Um, there's been a couple of points of order to extend. Um, I want to make sure everyone can speak. Um, so let, let's, let's have that motion, please.
Move to extend to 11. Second.
Move second and any discussion? Member Amos?
Yes.
Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Bennett? Bennett, yes.
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gusterson?
Gusterson, yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
Imber, yes.
Kirshman?
No.
Lavoy?
I want to confirm that the meeting is still being recorded and there'll be a transcript of what's been said.
Correct.
No.
Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Mills?
Mills, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Silva? Asma?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yes. I thought I was unmuted.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Chair votes yes. The meeting's extended to 11:00 PM. Uh, we're on to member Haynes.
Thanks. Uh, I'm going to be blunt. This is a disgraceful sham, just like the one you filed in April, Matt. And it should be thrown out with the rest of the trash. I support Adam's, uh, motion. We've seen this routine from you before. We saw right through it in April and it's just as easy to see through this again tonight. And you are wasting us time, energy, money that we don't have on legal fees. All over a three-word email. Three-word email, really. That sent you running in a huff all the way to the AG. So let me, uh, let me just say, I was very happy to hear, uh, Krista's comments, uh, because it was actually what I had, had guessed. When I read, and I do a lot of editing, when I read, this is great. That can mean different things. It could be about the state's feedback. Maybe it was about the quick response itself from Darryl. She's thanking him for a quick turnaround. Or, you know, it could just be there was a misfire on reply, reply all, which also sounds like was the case. You talked to Megan. How about talking to Krista? How about that? You know what? That's what an adult would do, Matt, and it's incredible.
I'm sorry, member chairs, I have a point of order. Uh, you know, right now we have a member addressing a number of other members not going through the chair.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I was, I need to go through Megan for that.
Yeah, and I, I.
I, I do, I do question the demeanor of the direct dialogue that's, that's occurring.
Right. I would agree. I think it needs to remain to the question on the floor.
Okay, I support the motion. And.
Thank you. Um, member Brown and then member Dennis.
Yeah, I, I agree. This is a complete waste.
Yeah, I agree. This is a complete waste of time. We spend so much time on this position that it's amazing that we're doing this. I do also agree that we should accept Attorney Stoneberg's recommendation.
Thank you. Member Mills?
I think this is related enough, but to the superintendent through the chair, blind carbon copy. I know for four years as Chair, I asked so many times, blind carbon copy. We've had issues with that in the past. That prevents these things and it makes it clear if it's intentional or not. So please, blind carbon copy.
I thoroughly agree and that's why I blind carbon copy all of you when I write an email to all of you. All right. Seeing no more hands, the motion on the floor is to accept Attorney Stoneberg's response to the complaint as written. Is there no further, oh, sorry, Member Shapiro, one more hand. Sorry.
Hi, yes. So I just want to say as a new member also, I was absolutely shocked when I saw this coming through because I felt like this could have been me. So I just wanted to kind of say that. But I do have a question. I mean, just again, for educational purposes, if this is goes through that we do find a violation, what is the result of that? Is there a fine? Is there a fee? Is there?
No, none of that. So it would be, there would be a recommendation to the person violating the OML to not do it again, whether it's a certain training, something to that effect, to help the person not make that mistake again.
Okay, all right. I just was wondering. Thank you.
Member Longbullel, I'm sorry.
Just very simply, I just want to be on the record just stating that I agree that this was not intended to prompt a discussion or influence the opinion of the committee. So I don't feel it violated the spirit or intent of the law. And I think filing the complaint was an overreaction. That was not appropriate. And so I would support the attorney's position.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? I'm so sorry for missing you guys. Seeing none, go through a roll call vote. Member Amos?
So make sure here, when I'm voting yes, I'm saying I agree that it was not an open meeting violation, right?
Correct.
Okay, Amos, yes.
Ayala.
Ayala, yes.
Bennett? Krista? I get to vote? Okay, I should probably abstain because it's about me? Yep. Number Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haynes?
Yes.
Imber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy? Matt, are you still with us? I'll circle back. Member Longbullel?
Longbullel, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Otmar?
Otmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes. I've made plenty of typos, reply alls and swiping mistakes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Circling back to Member Lavoy, are you with us?
Yeah, I removed myself from the conversation when personal attacks began. Thanks.
Do you wish to vote?
I removed myself from the conversation when personal attacks against my character began. Thanks.
Okay. The Chair is going to abstain. So the motion passes and I will file that with the Attorney General. There is no new business on the agenda. Next is an executive session to discuss strategy for contract negotiations with rebargaining unit.
Member Weeks, Chair, can we add members, items of new business, though? Is that permitted?
Yep, and I can put that on my list.
I just want to circle back. We've talked a lot tonight about, you know, the need for more information in other meeting. Is that something that you will discuss with the superintendent? This kind of seems like a new business-y kind of thing.
Um, I didn't know exactly where to fit this in, so I think you just gave me an avenue to do so, Member Mills. I would be very comfortable holding a special meeting next Monday, the 30th, in between our two meetings, seeing as the 7th is a holiday. So I would be fully in support of calling that meeting.
And 31st?
31st, excuse me. And I will do so after this meeting. Member Dennis had his hand?
Yes, thank you. So there were a number of questions that were raised during the second public hearing that were just simply read into the record as questions. And, you know, I guess I'm hoping that there is some avenue that we have for the administration to actually providing answers to those questions.
Dr. McCall, how do we provide when the member of the public just asks a question? How do we get back to them?
So what we'll do is we'll collect all the questions and attempt to respond to them as best we can and in as timely a manner as possible. You know, I can tell you that with 22 school committee members and the number of people that we have in this district, I have a handful of people trying to answer all these questions. So that's one of the reasons why this is taking longer, but I do appreciate people's patience.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm referring specifically to the questions that were raised during the second public hearing. And if there's some way, whether it's through posting an updated FAQs or, you know, again, something that lets them know that they've been heard and that there are answers to their questions, I think that would be appropriate.
Sounds good.
Thank you. There's another hand, Member Gustafson, for an item of new business?
My question was related to the first item of new business raised about a meeting next Monday. I was curious if the superintendent felt he could have some of the information we're requesting by that time or if we needed to look into perhaps the day after the holiday or whatever. My concern is that we've had trouble getting information in a timely manner, including business and finance information, where we have some pending matters that have not yet been brought to the committee. And our business finance person is on vacation this week, so I just didn't know if you'd have the opportunity to get the information we're requesting by then.
So, Malaya, you bring up a good point. I did have communication with Director Didi. I will be able to send something out hopefully tomorrow to you with an update around some information that he would have shared at Business and Finance. You know, in reference to a timeframe for all of the other questions and so forth. You know, Monday's a quick turnaround, but, you know, we won't have the answers for everything. But we'll do our best to be able to respond as much as possible.
That's fine. I was just raising the question to make sure we weren't setting ourselves up for disappointment and still not having any information.
Well, the other piece of this is when this type of, you know, thing happens, you know, we want to send the information out to Friday. So we already have other things going on during the week that we're focusing on as well. So just, everything gets compressed. We'll do our best.
All right. So you think it's feasible to have some of it? So that's fine. I was just raising the question.
Thank you. Any other items of new business, guys? Okay. Seeing none, so we'll go over to, I have to read the whole thing. Executive session to discuss strategy for contract negotiations with three bargaining units, SEIU, Local AAA, ABA Program Assistance, Teamsters Local Union, 170 Pair Professionals, Wachusett and Minnesota's Association. And to report on progress in negotiations with the WREA under 2020/2021 school reopening, as the Chair deems a discussion in public session would have an adverse effect on the bargaining position, not to return to public session. You guys received a separate invite to a group meeting for this. So what we're going to do in this particular meeting session, and then I'll see you guys on before this.
So moved?
Second.
Place Chair Dennis, could you call the roll or something?
You know what? I'm going to see Rebecca when I call on the roll. Rebecca, are you there? Is Rebecca there? Not like you do it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mike, I'm here. I'm here.
Amos?
Nicole?
Yes, yes.
Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
Imber, yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Lavoy? Lavoy?
Yes.
Longbullel?
Longbullel, yes.
Mills?
Mills, yes.
Mitchell? Ben? Ben's gone. Otmar?
Otmar, yes.
Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Silva? Silva, yes. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Weeks?
I think Member Weeks left the meeting. So I believe Rebecca that we have passed that motion. So our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the executive session invitation link. Thank you.